Concerned about ZBA issues.
Right, okay. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I've known Sean for five years and I have allowed him to use the jetty, which is on his property, but it crosses over the Latorio boundary. And it was done here, I think in May, May 2021. There was a big meeting here and I allowed him to connect this new dock there. So for five years he's been using it. And that's the type of a neighbor I am. What his wife said, I just really can't believe that. It really disturbs me. And about his dock sinking into the sand or whatever it is, to me that's a lot of baloney. I haven't seen it sink into the sand or anything. He spent over $10,000 to have that wall done. And they did an excellent job on it. They worked on it for three days, four days. He had like nine people working there. So I just wanted to make those comments. And now I can get started. Well, before I get started, I thank God I have a chance here to, I guess, defend myself and to explain why I'm here. So I'm gonna do that. I have some pictures of the jetty in question. And some other things that I'd like to pass out. This jetty's been, is it all right if I talk now?
You can, you can.
The jetty's been there for over 70 years and it's in very good shape.
Thank you.
I've shared it with my other two neighbors, the Ivitts's and the Smiths. And they were there for maybe a total of 60 years. I really don't know who made it, but it's been there and it'll probably outlast all of us here. So if we just look at some of the pictures over here, this first picture here on the bottom is the 504 house over here. And if you look at it, you'll see that there's a jetty is in the back over there. It's a concrete jetty. And then at the front, you have the metal dock. And this is an older picture, but this was when the dock was longer and that's when he came to the, the meeting over here in 2021 and it was reduced. And if you notice also, on the right-hand side, you'll see trees. There's no trees on the property now. Sean had 20 trees cut down and it was just unbelievable how the property is now. It's just like a bomb went off over there. And we have no shade on our side. So that's why we run the air conditioners, because it got rid of all the shade for everybody. So why he wants to remove the jetty, I really don't know. If he removes the jetty and puts his dock in like he plans to, he's gonna be moving it over to the south side. And if he moves it over to the south side towards 522, I guess his dock, his boat, jetty and his lifts are around 34 feet. So he's gonna be making the cove, basically taking the cove over for himself over there and not having anything, or having probably very little consideration for the neighbors in that area. So it's gonna be close to 1,300 square feet that he's gonna be doing. The jetty, if you look at the picture and the first page, you'll see this was a picture of the drawdown on the jetty. Maybe it was like 10 or 15 years ago. It wasn't in that good shape, but after he spent like over $10,000 to have it fixed, it's in very good shape. And on the next page, you'll see that there's three pictures of the jetty and he has four-inch concrete on the top of it. And he has his two boats over there. And it's in very good shape. It's not sinking into the sand and it's not gonna disappear like he thinks it's going to be. And in the top right-hand corner of this second picture over here, here's a picture of the jetty. Maybe that was maybe 10 or 15 years ago, but the other three pictures are of this year. And it's still standing there. And on the other side, I have a jetty. That's my property, 502 on the other side there. The way the jetty was made, if I could just have everybody's attention for a second. The jetty is like this. It's not square. It goes out a little bit like this, like a pyramid. And then the top of the jetty is five feet and the length is 30 feet. And then on the bottom, the jetty is basically six feet wide. It's wider on the bottom. It's like a pyramid. So, and it goes down at least two feet, because I've seen it when they built it. So we're talking a lot of footage underneath the lake bed over here. And I did a calculation. If that jetty is 30 feet long and if we use six feet for the bottom of it, that comes out to be 180 feet. And then if you multiply it by the two-foot fling, you come out to 360 feet divided by three feet and we're coming out to needing at least 40 square yards of fill. And that's, that's possibly how big the hole's gonna be, or it could even be larger than that. And I don't have any idea where we're gonna get it. You can't put sand or dirt or fill into the lake bed. That's my understanding. And it's gonna be a huge crater over there. And eventually, when the water comes in and goes out again, it's all gonna probably come over from my side, because I'm the closest neighbor and the jetty is on the Latorio line over there. So if he wants to take this jetty out, it's gonna be a big problem, because I'm not gonna give him permission to bring a crane down like you mentioned last time, or have people cross over the Latorio boundary. And I do have three surveys in here, which hopefully I could just go, go over with the board. And all three of them show that that jetty, I'm not talking about the dock. The jetty is on the Latorio line, especially at the end.
My, just before you continue, my understanding and from what I've seen visiting the site and everything, the furthest part of the jetty out into the water actually crosses the Latorio boundary and is on your, in your Latorio boundary.
That's correct.
Okay. But this other side of it is, three or four years ago, you gave them permission to leave it there.
No, I gave him permission to connect his dock to it, Steve.
To what?
To connect the metal dock to the Latorio boundary. I mean, to the, to the jetty.
And that further went out into your, your Latorio.
Right, that's correct.
Okay. But again, I just wanna be sure that if he, if he were to do any kind of remediation on that concrete part of the jetty, part of it is on your, in your Latorio.
That's correct.
Okay.
I have no problem with him fixing it.
No, no, go ahead.
It's been there for 70 years. We had neighbors there. We shared it with everybody. We got along with people. We don't, we're not above people.
No, no, go back to your presentation.
I, I do have a question before we move on from that subject. The current site plan that was presented by Mr. Stanzielli shows Latorio boundary using the cove method. And it looks to me, using that method, that the jetty is not within your Latorio border. Whereas the map that you submitted with your documents here, it looks like the Latorio border goes straight out.
They have so many different. I know that. There's three of them here. I have them in here and mine shows that it is on the, my property line. And then this one is the same one that he had done in 2020 by Mr. Wiley. And all he did was he just changed, it almost looks exactly the same. He just changed the Latorio. One has it on it and one doesn't have it on it. So which one are you gonna believe?
Well, we use the cove method. I believe that it's considered a cove in there.
It is.
Which, from other surveyors, I guess that terminology is in question. But the latest one shows, uses the cove method and it shows an angle going out where I believe the jetty is.
I've been trying to get a surveyor, I don't know if you're aware of it, Mr. Lipicott, but I was told that there are no surveyors in Winston to do this. I called up a couple of months ago to find someone and Keith did my land survey for me in 2014 and he was a very reputable guy. And that survey, it shows that it's crossing over there on my survey. Did you see that?
I'm just looking at the.
Yeah, the surveys contradict themselves.
Yeah, they're different.
Yeah, we've experienced that in other areas.
And we asked, well, I don't know. We asked John DeCara, when he was here representing somebody and it was the one in that Sandy Cove, the Shore Drive Cove. And I thought it should've been cove method. He said, it's up in the air. There is no definition of it.
I think, I think that the.
Here's the one, here's the one that shows that it is going over. It was done by Mr. Wiley. And it does, and it does go over the Latorio boundary.
Yeah, see, this one's straight.
Yeah, right.
Straight out.
That's correct, yeah.
Whereas the one that he's got.
Right. I know that, because it's gotta be unchanged. It's the same map. It's, just let me point one thing out. It's the same map, but they just changed the, moved this a little bit here and tweaked it a little bit here. But even if it's, even if it's over here, it's so close that it's unbelievable. It doesn't even have it in here.
I think whether or not it crosses over into your property or not, it's clearly in the Latorio boundary of 504.
Yeah, it's beyond the 10 feet.
That's for sure.
It's.
That's for sure.
Yeah.
But it may even cross the Latorio boundary.
It may, yeah.
We use the old survey.
Yeah. So I've been trying to get, like I said, to somebody to, to do my cove method to show that, to show the way I wanted it seen. And I haven't been able to find anybody.
You lost two Keiths and you lost John DeCara.
I know, right.
In the home of the youth.
Right. The two Keiths are gone. I'm sorry to say that. But his survey was, as far as I'm concerned, he was one of the best surveyors around, Peter and Jason. And here's mine, just to show you. He didn't use the Latorio boundaries and the president probably never had it over here. Here's the, the jetty there and it crosses it right there.
That's not a cove method anymore.
It isn't, because he didn't use it.
I don't think there's a clear answer to it.
Yeah, but this is 2014.
I don't think there's an answer.
So anyways, just getting back to top, after, the reason I'm concerned about it is the craters. And if that's the case, there's gonna be wall damage to my wall, because it's so close. This thing has been here for, like I said, over 70 years. And there's also, the state of Connecticut has public law 7196, also known as the Connecticut Environmental Protection Act. I'm sure everybody here is aware of that. And it basically says that the citizens could sue to prevent the unreasonable pollution or the impairment or the destruction of air, water, including the lake beds. And that's from the Connecticut General Statute 22-16. And that specifically says that we should not be damaging the lake beds. And it goes on to say, in essence, the 1971 act, by bolstering the public trust document and providing legal avenues for citizens to act and to serve to protect the Connecticut lake beds is a valuable public resource, ensuring their responsible use and guarding against any undue harm or degradation. Okay, so that's what that was. And the other thing is with the surveys, I was very surprised that on Sean's survey, when we were here last month, he came up with 78 feet on the lakefront. I went over there and I asked him, Sean, I can't understand how you have 78 feet on that property line.
On the waterfront.
Waterfront, excuse me. And he told me it's 78 feet. I said, why can't we go over there and measure it, Sean? And he said, 78 feet. He was very, very defensive and, and this is, this is getting to be, it's gonna be a big problem here, one way or the other. But anyways, getting back to the deeds, the people that owned 504 before, Fred Ivitts and Randy, and Mr. Smith, his wife Norman and Eleanor, we knew them very well. And on their deeds, which is included in your package, it shows 75 feet. It doesn't show 78 feet. Three feet is a big difference. And the three feet is probably being taken off of my property and I'm not, not keen with that. And the other thing is, from your Inland Wetlands meeting as of March 17th, I have the, I have copies of it. It says, I think her name was Mrs. Colawicki, questioned whether there should be some kind of a written consent from the neighbor, meaning myself, for the dock encroachment for the Latorio boundary. And then Mr. Sherman, who was Mr. Stanzielli's representative, specifically said, I have it right in here, he noted that the Latorio line was going right through the center of the dock and indicated that the neighbor, which was myself, John, was also, was also, which allowed, was.
Well, that was, that was verified in the minutes from that meeting.
Right.
Right.
Allowed the situation. I gave him, the whole thing is, I don't really care who my neighbor is. I like the people and let them use the jetty. And so if it crosses over a little bit, fine. I'm not gonna make a big deal out of it. But the point I'm trying to make is, when I hear what his wife said about me and that really tees me off.
So it sounds like he would prefer to leave the jetty in.
I definitely want to leave the jetty in. The jetty belongs there. It protects everybody's property line. If you take the jetty out, Mr. Lipicott, and do his plans, he's moving everything over to 522. He's gonna take the whole cove over, just about. He'll have all, everything in front of there. And then he's gonna put the ski jet on our side. That's ridiculous. The thing that really gets me about this guy and his plans is, he just doesn't wanna stop. He just keeps going. And then just getting back to the ZBA.
Leave that out, John, only because, like I said, initially, I didn't wanna get into that conversation. I was polite.
Okay.
I'm polite again.
Okay.
But, you know, limit your remarks to the water.
Okay, I'm wrapping it up.
Okay. Now, you can continue, but talk to the waterfront and the runoff for the leaders and gutters if it affects you. Then, you're talking our language, not ZBA language.
Okay. Anyways, under your ordinance, section 380-4, permit application requirements, and carrying out the intent of this chapter to reduce congestion around the lakeshore, eliminate boundary disputes among the neighbors, avoid navigational hazards, the impediments and the impiments of the ingress and egress of the shore. The commission should take into consideration all the relevant facts and circumstances to make their decision. And in this case, if he wants to take the jetty out and then put in his metal dock and move it more in the middle of his property, this is definitely gonna affect a lot of things. It's gonna affect the size and the configuration of the structure, the impact on the water course. It's gonna be almost in the whole cove, the Latorio rights of the adjacent property, which would be me. If he takes the jetty out, I don't want the jetty taken out. And the others, those, and those are the main issues over there. And the, so I hope you all looked at his, his survey with, with the dock. Did everybody see that, that he wants to move it over 34 feet?
The survey indicates that he'd like to remove the jetty.
Right, that's correct.
And then reposition a new dock.
Mm-hmm.
With a boat lift and putting a jet ski lifted.
Right.
And, and he's within his right to ask for those things.
I know that.
Okay.
But what I'm just saying, Steve, is where he is in the cove, it's gonna be, make it much more crowded. And this ordinance that I just read, 380-7, says that we should not allow it because of that.
No, what it says is that we should, the commission should be aware of navigational issues.
Yes, right.
For things that we approve. And, you know, we would certainly take that into consideration and would determine whether or not it's navigational hazard that the gentleman or the applicant is creating, or it's your opinion that it's creating a navigational hazard. But there's seven or eight people appear that will decide that with the input from the wetlands agent.
Okay. And then the last thing, I'm getting to the end. It's the last one is ordinance 38-7, it says, in no event shall a permit be granted that will result in the crossing of a Latorio boundary. And that also includes the air. So if he has a crane and he wants to take the jetty out by some kind of a mechanical means, using it on his lawn and then lifting it up, he's still gonna be crossing my Latorio boundary line, because his jetty is still on it, part of it is still on it. And I do not wanna have that done. It's going against my grain and it's just not gonna, it just, it isn't gonna fly with me.
You understand, that jetty, the way I see it, the beginning of the jetty leaving his property.
It is.
Okay, you can't even go on it. So you couldn't even get to the last two and a half foot of jetty that comes to a slipper.
Yes. If it comes to a slipper, it's still five feet out there.
It's five feet down there, but only two and a half feet of it is on your Latorio line.
I know that. But it still is on my line. That's the whole thing.
What I'm just saying, there's no, you have no, no way of getting to it.
I don't want to get, I want him to use it. I have no problem, Mr. Stanzielli, using my jetty. I have a problem of having him remove it and then creating a crater in the lake bed and then having all of my.
Don't you think that, and this is only my opinion.
Sure.
But don't you think that we actually don't have a lake bed under a bunch of concrete?
No, that's not true.
Snails don't live under there, lambs don't live under there.
Okay, what would you call it then?
I would say if you removed it, you'd have a lake bed.
Uh-huh, okay.
That would be.
Well, you're getting pretty technical, but what I'm saying is, it's on top of the lake bed and there's a two feet of stone and rock infoundation that's on the bottom of it that's supporting.
My, my understanding is that the, that concrete pier that goes out.
It just doesn't sit on that.
Does not sit on the surface of the lake. It's, it's below the surface of the lake.
Below the surface of the lake.
Right. That's correct, yes.
And, and he's saying that in order to remove that, it would be detrimental to the lake. And in order to remove it, it would, it would, in his opinion, necessitate being in his Latorio air boundary.
Right.
It's on the other side of the applicant's Latorio boundary. There's one line down the middle and the, the jetty crosses over that line. So, you know, he's saying, I won't give him permission to take that portion out.
I just saw it, got the thing and take mine out.
Go ahead.
Well, I think Gary, I would say.
One at a time, guys.
Gary does bring up a valid point as far as lake bed, because lake beds can be restored and we can have native, the copper plants put in them. And essentially, there isn't a lake bed now if it's covered with concrete. It's on a surface on the lake. But as far as, you know, material that a fish could swim in or a native plant could grow in, it doesn't happen.
I do have a question about that, though. If, if it's removed and there is a two-foot deep by however long that is, pretty long, 30 feet hole, depression. We don't actually have a plan right now from the applicant about how that's gonna be dealt with, that's looked at.
Wouldn't you, wouldn't you?
Oh, I'm just, Gary, just let me finish my thought. I'm not saying yes, no, or otherwise. I'm just saying there's no actual plan. There's no remediation plan for that hole being presented to us right now.
Why would, why would you wanna fill a hole? It's a natural lake bed underneath all of that stuff.
Because it's gonna be coming from my side, the soil and everything else. That's, that's my concern over there.
Majority of the hole is on his side.
I know, but it's on the borderline.
Let's take it into that conversation. Did Tom, hang on. Did Tom Gomaldi in his response address that issue? How, how the applicant is gonna remediate, if any, if any, the hole?
I'm not certain. Keeping my wheel, I got 72.
I don't wanna put you on the spot, but.
Cause it's like 60 cubic feet worth of holes.
Yeah. I don't see anything in its context.
So then he, maybe he has to address that.
Yeah, I would say someone has to address it.
But there's nothing saying, like, like this looks to me like a stone, not all concrete. Okay, and there's nothing saying you're gonna go all the way to the bottom, take it all stone out. You could take, you could stay, take a stone out to where it's six inches below.
Sure, but we're just talking hypotheticals. All I'm saying is there's no plan.
Then it becomes, you know what?
There's no narrative and.
He'd have to bring in the media in order to actually.
Yeah, like.
You know, you don't wanna create a swimming, you don't wanna create a swimming hazard either, if you shear the, the pier a foot above the lake bed.
All I'm saying is that, that that part of the proposal's incomplete.
And I would agree. I think that's a very valid point. And if you're gonna take out, then basically expose the lake bed, have a plan of what you're gonna do with it, how you're gonna remediate it. I mean, that's a pretty common thing to remediate lake beds and.
Can I, can I just interject?
Whatnot, and I think it's within, they can certainly come up with a plan and have, I don't know if that's a.
Can I just interject something? We spent a little over an hour on this application and it's going to be continued. I think in some kind of fairness to everybody else who has an application before us and is waiting here, I think we should order, limit the comments to another 10 minutes and then cut off the conversation and continue the public hearing until next month. And maybe we'll have more facts that we can deal with, not supposition or opinion. And maybe we'll have, certainly we'll have an opportunity to look at Tom Gomaldi's report and reflect on it. And, and maybe if some things are lacking in his report, we can get back to Tom and ask him to revisit it again.
I think it should be up to Kyle and Tom conjunction to come up with a plan.
Yeah. But again, let's, let's be polite, a few more minutes and then we're gonna move on.
All right, thank you, Steve. And the last thing I just wanted to say is, just with the jetty, I feel that it should still be in there. And if he takes it out, I'm gonna do everything necessary within the law to protect my rights, my land, my waterfront property, including appealing this decision if it doesn't go my way.
Okay, thank you.
If I just wanted to.
Barry, you raised your hand. You wanna say something? Do you come up to the table?
Could you just stay here for one second, John? Winch, okay. Let your wife speak and then.
I really don't have that much to say, because honestly, I just feel like.
Go louder.
I don't have that much to say, because of the, of the, all of Brooke's words that she was allowed to get out, all about everything else. And it was mostly just a, a vendetta against my husband. And I, I don't, I just think that, I don't think it's very fair to use that kind of an argument. I don't know if it's called straw man argument or what argument is, but it's supposed, it's demeaning to somebody. And then when that person has to get up and speak, it's, it's difficult. And I'm just saying, I don't, I don't have much to say, because I don't think that there's anything I could say, that I could defend, that anybody here would listen to. That's how I feel. It may be wrong, not every, and maybe there's a few people, but, but most of the board has spent a lot of time defending what they wanted to do. Not everybody, but most people.
I don't know that. I think most of the board, all of the board has been polite, listening to both sides of the argument with some kind of tolerance. And we've certainly made it clear that.
Did what, did you hear that what, sir?
I think we've, we've listened to both sides with some kind of tolerance in terms of being polite and saying to both sides, both you and the applicant, that, you know, we're not interested in your zoning issues, we're interested in your waterfront issues. So having said that, you know, let's just, again, stay focused. John, anything else?
No. Do you wanna ask me something, Matt?
Yeah, I just, so your only objection to this project is just about the removal of the jetty.
Yes. If he leaves the jetty in and if he wants to raise his wall one foot, I have no problem. As long as he leaves the jetty there, I think that's very fair. And for years, I let, like I said, for five years, I let him use the jetty. If he wants to use it for another five years or for, for a long time, I have no problem with that. But I do have a problem if he's gonna take it away and then he's gonna cause damage to my lake bed, which I assume will happen regardless of what. Some people think, I'm afraid of that. That's all I can say.
And as far as the rest of the, the house construction, the removal.
The house construction is not that ZBA related.
No, 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 like.
But Matt's talking about drainage.
The drainage, excavation, the, that phase of the project, you have no objections to.
No, we're not talking about that, are we?
Yes, this is.
We're not talking about the ZBA.
We're expanding.
No, 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 no.
But, but, sorry. It is confusing. It is confusing for people. There are wetlands-related items in the construction plan that have to do with water quality.
I know.
Right? So what Matt's asking you is, do you have any issues with how the footing drains are designed? Do you have issues with how the water filtration system is designed?
No, I don't think I have any issues as, right, right now, Mary Ann, with that. But with the ZBA, there's a big issue there and that'll be addressed next, next week.
Okay, and so long as the, is the public hearing is continued, you know, we'll revisit you should there be a, a need on your part to talk again.
Yes.
So, okay?
And if you need me to talk again, I'll be more than happy to.
You're going to be here next week, I'm sure.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay, guys, thank you. Um, rather than introduce anybody else, you know, let's just continue the public hearing. And then we can have some kind of.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, yeah, well, just so we have some kind of civility to everybody else, but go ahead.
Before we do that, should we request Kyle and Gomaldi to get a plan together? To have that prepared for us for next weekend?
Oh, oh, for the, for the crater, yeah.
I, I. Do you have to make a decision whether or not to take it out?
We, yeah, that.
Okay, if you decide you want to continue to take it out, come up with a plan to fill the hole.
Yeah.
We'll be glad to, okay, hire him.
And again.
Come up with a plan before the next meeting.
Yeah, and I would suggest you, you do it if you can in a timely manner so that Tom has it in a timely manner. And I'm going to ask that somewhere along the public hearing and probably next month, I don't know if it's going to continue beyond next month, that we ask Tom to be here so that if we have any questions, you know, rather than getting a secondhand or interpreting what he's writing down as, as his findings, we can sort of have a conversation with him.
I have, I just have one question.
Go ahead.
I hope it's not going to be controversial, I, I just don't know the answer to this. A littoral boundary that's in the water, is that considered somebody's property, meaning the lake bed? Or is that just a boundary that is like a setback?
Boundary is a setback.
So it's a boundary that's a setback? It doesn't mean you, but the state owns, owns the, the property under the lake. I don't know if that, I, I just, I had to clarify that a little bit in my mind of what, you know.
State owns the water, town of Winston owns the property underneath the lake, underneath the water.
Right.
But, but we have the responsibility to maintain the integrity of both.
Yeah, that's why I do think we, and if everyone's already said it, the only thing I want to add about whatever the remediation plan is that you work out with the engineer is just make sure that they feel very comfortable with the deep guidelines as it relates to that issue. Because, um, you know, it's, it's really a sensitive area, the lake bed.
All right, is there a motion to continue the public hearing until the September meeting?
I'll make motion to continue the public hearing for this application till the September meeting.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor of continuance? That's unanimous? All right, thank you very much. Uh, we'll see everybody who is an interesting party back here next month and we'll resume the conversation. Uh, let me just get my paperwork together. Okay, this goes here, this goes here, this all goes. Okay. Next order of business is the second public hearing. Uh, inland wetlands water ca- water course commission twenty-five dash twenty. The applicant is the town of Winchester. The representative is Joanna Lepse- Jessup. Um, the location is Hurlbut and Bedwell Street and it construct a wetland for drainage along Birdsall Street. Joanna, you want to introduce yourself and Jim, please?
Hi, my name is Joanna Jessup. I'm the, um, town engineering intern.
Okay. Jim?
Uh, Jim Rollins, Director of Public Works.
Okay, um, we heard your application last month. Is there anything else you'd like to add or enhance what we are understanding of the application tonight?
Yeah, we have a presentation that kind of overviews everything that was changed.
Is he going to, is he going to present new information or, okay? Yankee game is on, uh, Am- Amazon tonight.
So who cares?
Ready?
I'm up here, whether I'm up there is a whole nother.
Jeff is what I'm watching what's behind me?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. All right, two out of three.
Surround sound.
Nice.
Ready?
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So you want to take it away?
Yeah, we're just going to go over, um, kind of the process of each plan, starting with existing demolition and our proposed plan.
Would you mind speaking up?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
Um, this is just our overview of what we're going to go over, just our existing plan, what's kind of happening over there and the conditions and what we want to address, demolition, and then on to the proposed plan that we have. Um, key issues, steeps, uh, this is, on the right is a picture from Hurlbut Street looking down, or sorry, Birdsall Street looking down to Hurlbut. And we can see we have a really steep slope with a lot of sediment buildup. We have a deteriorating retaining wall on that right side of that picture. And we also have a fallen fence. You can't quite see in that picture, but we have more pictures kind of showing that. Um, it's a low lying area towards the bottom that collects runoff from Birdsall and adjacent residential areas. Um, it's very overgrown and difficult to maintain with that steep slope. And the current wetland sits at a thousand square feet, so that's kind of what's going on there. Um, this is kind of the plan that kind of overviews everything I just went over. Again, that fallen fence, um, we want to re, yeah, that fallen fence. That's the footprint of the existing wetland being a thousand feet and.
So the fallen fence is right here along the side of Birdsall Street.
You have your mouse there, I see it.
Oh, yeah, she's.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's a way to do it down here.
Yeah, I just figured that out. Or she just figured it out.
Yeah, cool.
There you go.
Yeah.
So the fallen fence is right along the sidewalk here. Some of it's been removed, some of it hasn't. Um, and then the wetland, the existing wetland area was flagged by, uh, a soil scientist and this is where it is laid out. And then obviously the upland review area is the blue line all the way around it. And you can see super steep slopes coming down into the local.
Yeah, that steep slope is the, yeah, that steep slope right now sits at a two to one slope. And we want to kind of flatten that out and reduce that. And as far as existing, yeah, that's about it. These are some more pictures. We can see that fallen fence and all of that overgrown brush kind of growing over that and the, yeah. And there's also currently stairs on that far, yeah, right there. There's currently stairs on that sidewalk that we want to also flatten out and get rid of those and redo the sidewalk. And over on that right picture at the very bottom in this area right here is where that wetland sits. Yeah, right there.
Right now, right, right below the dot.
So that's closest to the house existing to the right of the wetlands.
Correct, yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Some more pictures of those stairs and that manhole basin and those corrugated metal pipes, uh, that we all want to get rid of.
Pretty much everything's in a state of disrepair over there. My understanding of the history of the site is that it didn't used to be quite so steep sloping. But back in the day, there was a, a mason contractor that lived in the house closest and just kept dumping his debris over and just created a very steep slope that eventually filled with vegetation and dirt and sediment and so forth. How the wetland got there, I'm not, I think it was just, you know, there was a mound putting, I think the whole thing's, you know, entirely artificial, but regulations don't stipulate between manmade, artificial and, you know, naturally occurring.
And somewhere along the line, several years back, a lot of the trees were taken down there.
We took down a bunch of dead and dying trees, yep. And then there was some taken down when the house next door was built too. There was, there was trees on that lot that, well, actually they were on our lot, they got taken down during that construction. It happens. So the basin there shows just a bunch of, you know, rusty old steel pipes. You see there's in the corner, there's actually a manhole cover that somehow found its way inside. I don't know, but.
Um, as far as demolition plans, we plan to remove deteriorating infrastructures, including pipes, that fallen fence. And we want to install silt fencing for erosion control during construction and clear any deteriorating trees from the area. This is, yeah, as I just said, remove the fallen fence. We want to relocate and remove those two storm drains right there.
So you'll see right here, these two drains currently go into that manhole that we were showing in the other slide. When you see the proposed, that's going to change, uh, which gets to part of the purpose of the whole project. Currently, the pipe that runs down through here carries more water than it should. Uh, or doesn't carry as much water as it should, I guess is a better way of saying it. So we want to divert the water off of Birdsall, which is not a huge amount, but we want to divert that and run it into a constructed wetland in the same general area where it can be tamed and treated and released slowly back into the environment rather than just overwhelming a storm drain, which overwhelms storm drains further down and doesn't ever get treated. So this, this, this slide, you know, really shows, you know, how just changing a pipe here and running it down into a, you know, a constructed wetland, you know, serves multiple purposes. Anything else?
No, uh, but just about covers it. And this is just the same image, but with just the s- that silt fence that we want to.
Jim, are you going to replace the pipe?
Yep, we'll get to that when we get to, uh, what's proposed. So here's the, here's the proposed silt fence, keeping it out of the road. And then during reconstruction, we'll also have a silt fence up above the construction area just to keep it out of the, you know, the newly constructed wetland.
Is there any possibility that whatever you're proposing impacts on that house?
I don't see how, um. Let me think about that, but I don't, I don't, I don't know that it would. There's no drains in the house that runs there. It's just a, just a big huge pile of earth and material between that and the house. The house is set up a little bit.
But by running a lot of water into the wetlands, is there any possibility of it overflowing or creating a, a soft walking surface on their land?
I don't think so, but let me, I, I, I didn't consider that.
Um, I sized it for the ninety percent storms, so.
Go louder.
I sized it for the ninety percent storms, so it definitely holds the, like, majority of storms, so it wouldn't.
Well, I think the majority is one thing, you know, the neighbor is interested, interested in that small minority that might change because of what you're doing. And that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so in the event that more water comes into this than it can store, you're going to, it's going to act essentially as a level spreader across the top of this. This is all one elevation and it will just pour out onto the roadway and then down the road to the next catch basin, which we didn't end up getting on there, did we? There's a catch basin right down, right down here somewhere and it would jump right into the same pipe that it used to go into.
So the overflow essentially kick out on the road versus into the neighbor's property?
Yes, yep.
Any hydraulic water at all that you have to, hydraulic water at all that you have to worry about that, that coming up?
You mean water pressure, you know, like pushing through the soil?
All pushing up underneath his house.
Oh, pushing up, no, because it, it's got a free, it's, it's just going to rise up and then it'll just overflow and trickle down over the edge.
Overflow.
Yeah.
So it'll cross over the sidewalk or you're going to channel it under the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah, it would cross over the sidewalk, right into the gutter, down to the next catch basin.
Can you build an outfall at the end?
You could, you could.
Was that Frank, I didn't hear you.
I said build an outfall at the end of your wetlands. The head wall would pipe and connect it to the storm drain. So this way, any overflow, at times of overflow, would go through the pipe.
In the ten percent of the time, because it's designed for ninety percent. You're talking about the ten percent of the, that.
Yeah, and you know, the other thing is.
This way you're not damaging anybody's property.
Well, it would just be kicked out onto the road, right?
Designed controlled.
My only thought is it's an additional cost to do it that way, right?
Right, yes, yes.
Yeah.
But if the water.
But we're talking about ten, a ten percent. Right, we're talking about a ten percent overflow.
It's that time when you get a storm like we had Thursday where you get that first hour of three in the rain.
Right. Yeah. But it would just be kicking it right out to the road, right?
You know, I'm not worried about the summer rain, I'm worried about melting from the summer, overflowing into the, 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 uh, wetlands and then freezing over the sidewalk and then walking up the sidewalk or walking down the sidewalk. There was a couple.
I don't think winter time would be a problem. It's going to be a, it's going to be a significant storm event would be the only thing.
Only because there's a couple of bus stops there for kids, uh, you know.
They, they're at home when it rains.
When you do this.
No more, not with Zoom.
The problem is.
Yeah.
Now they're all at school.
Then the town is responsible for anything happening downstream of that, whether it be icing or water or slipping.
Yeah.
No, I understand.
Then, because that's a manmade.
Right.
All right.
But it would only ice up, Frank, if it stayed there, right? Not if it's moving.
Uh, if I remember, I think what's happened before is, I think you did work in this gentleman's driveway because the water was percolating up from the, from the pipe or something.
So in the past, you know, you're correct and you are too, it's two different situations. Before the water was bleeding out, um, so it was bleeding out onto the sidewalk and freezing in the winter in its existing condition. So we put like just a little under drain to capture that water and run it into the pipe that you're talking about. When it just weeps out through a hillside.
Right.
It weeps out so slowly that it freezes. If you were having a storm event that overwhelmed it, it would come over the top, runoff. I don't think freezing would be your issue. But if, if you prefer that we, you know, we design, you know, a mechanical outlet into that pipe. It was one of our discussions we had during the process, we just chose not to, but.
It's a good design plus it takes a liability to town.
There you go, okay, we'll, we'll add that.
Off the table if anything happened again.
Yep.
Thank you. Go ahead, Jim.
Oh, this just kind of takes a look at the contour change plan. So this mainly goes over how we're changing it from a two to one slope to more of like the average of a four to one slope, so.
If you can see the, the, the dashed contour lines are the existing contours and we're, it's kind of, we're moving that, that lowest contour line way out closer to the project, which, you know, makes this half as steep over, over its length. At two to one, you have erosion issues and maintenance issues. At four to one, you can maintain it and you can manage erosion. So that's really all this plan is for, is to show the, the differences in contour without too much other baggage on the, on the plan.
Oh, if you want to, do you want to go inside? This is also a good representation of how we're taking that existing wetland and kind of, we're only just reorientating it and making it slightly larger and more constructed and this even see this how we're doing it.
So this is, this is the existing footprint of the wetland. And then we're basically just kind of rotating it a little bit counterclockwise and increasing it just ever so slightly in size. And that's the outside bold line right there.
So towards that, if you want to point towards the sediment four bay.
Yep.
So at the very top, we oriented this way so that it, anything that comes from Birdsall and falls into, down that slope, it falls down that slope, it's going to head into the sediment four bay first before going into the constructed wetland.
Jeremy, Jeff, can, can, can an applicant alter wetlands?
Yes, that, that's part of the app, that's the reason for the application.
Physically alter wetlands?
Yes, and in this case, so, you know, Connecticut general statutes, DEP wants you to not reduce the amount of wetlands. In this case, I think they're actually enlarging it.
Just a little.
Just a little bit, but, but it helps the case. So yes, you can alter wetlands.
By creating that flattened area.
But it becomes a manageable wet.
It becomes a manageable wetland. It's, it's probably a more functioning wetland. If you read through the wetland report, it's really a non-functioning wetland right now. Uh, and, and what, what Jim and, and Joanna are proposing is to actually use it for stormwater treatment.
Right.
Yeah, and for the next slide. Um, this is kind of an overview of our proposed plan. So we're going up about five hundred square feet in area from the existing to the proposed plan. So right now, we're sitting at fifteen hundred squared feet with a volume of twenty fi- twenty-five hundred cubic feet. Sediment, we have the sediment four bay area and volume. Um, we have with that, uh, much flatter slope, we have potential car- park components with a new sidewalk section, potential for future bench installations, um, infrastructure upgrades. We're looking at, um, the intersection realignment of looking from Birdsall, turning onto Hurlbut Street. Um, a new guard rail, uh, more pipe and those regraded slopes that we just discussed.
And then we'll show that on, all of that information is on here. This is the busy plan, so. Where are you on this thing? All right, how are we going to start? These were, there was two existing catch basins at the beginning. So those used to go into this manhole. Now what you're going to see is there's going to be a catch basin here and then this corner is going to be opened up. Remember there was, there was some concrete steps in the sidewalk here, which is completely not ADA compliant. So we're going to move that over and make it just a curved sloped sidewalk. Still won't be ADA compliant, but at least it'll be walkable. There'll be another, um, the, the thing is to improve it where you can, right? Kind of like wetlands. So there'll be another catch basin here and then so all the water coming down Birdsall Street, rather than going in. rather than going into an already over-capacity pipe, will now run down. It'll be treated with sumps into catch basin, then it'll go into a riprap, energy dissipator to slow the flow down and capture the fur- any sediment that does make it through. Overflow is into the four bay where any further sediment can precipitate out, and it's relatively easy to clean. Then overflow is, you know, in another dead level area like a level spreader, down into the wetland, where it will fill the wetland up and, you know, do its thing. It'll store the water, treat the water as it's naturally released back into the ground. So that's the, that's the basic idea of, of what we're proposing.
Do you, what assurance do you, do, can you show us that the water from Bird, Bird's All is gonna run into where you want it to go? You're gonna have to resurface that, the street?
Yep, yep, that intersection has to be re- reconfigured, yep.
Is that, is that in?
Well, and while we're doing that, so...
Is that in your plan?
So this is, this is kind of a, a multi, a multi-phase plan. This is part of the phase one, would be to get this, these catch basins into here. That's really the, the primary thing. As part of that, we have to redo, you know, this sidewalk on this side. There is a, an icing issue right up here by this, uh, this next house. Water bleeds out through these yards, comes out into the road, and we have a big freezing problem. So whether we have the, the resources to do this all, all at one shot, or we have to add this basin and this pipe into here later, I don't know. But, you know, it's a ten-year permit. If we, if we can put the money together in one shot, it'll be a one-shot deal. If we have to do it in phases, we will.
But what are you asking us to approve?
You're...
Part of it or all of it?
Well, I'm here for all of it, because whether I do it now or in ten years.
Okay.
Now, this is, I really don't need you up here, because it's outside the review area, but it's pertinent to the project, so we add it.
Guys, anything? Jeff, Jeremy?
No, I think it's a good plan. I had a question. Could you go back to the plate before that, where you had under, nope, next one? Potential for future, what is, how, how is it gonna be left? Like, as far as a maintenance of that, is it gonna be native vegetation? My thought, or is it gonna just kind of grow all back up and then, like, who's gonna maintain? I don't know if that's out of the scope of, of this board, but...
Maintenance of the wetland itself is, as part of a stormwater treatment, I guess would be within your purview. We could just let this thing grow vegetated wild and it would be, it wouldn't really be in your purview. But the plan, you know, since we're doing this work, we get a lot of complaints, believe it or not, about how ugly this corner is.
Yeah, it is.
Right? Right? So what we wanted, that's one of the reasons for flattening this up. So let me go back about five years. We were getting a lot of complaints about this, and people wanted me to, you know, the general consensus was fill this whole thing in a nice gentle slope, vegetate it, maybe make it a nice little park, right? Really cool little space, town-owned, you know, great. So I was all in, and then I found a wetland. Now we're here. So this is what we had to do to address an existing wetland. I couldn't just fill it in. So what can we do to accommodate people's desire to make it look better? My problem with an over-capacity stormpipe, and, you know, it took us until we had somebody with enough brains to draw it up, you know, to get it in front of you, so that's why we're here.
So it'll be attained, I guess, game of affairs, it'll be, if it doesn't turn into, in the future, say, some sort of park, how is it maintained before that?
So it, it's just, when we say park, that, that's, that's kind of a...
Green area is more, would be more accurate, probably. Green space, yeah.
Yeah, there you go, green space. Our plan is to plant this with clover, and it's relatively easy to mow. It's a nice, nice plant. It holds up, looks good, doesn't grow super huge, and if you maintain it, it won't be overcome by invasives so much in this area. I think this area is a lost cause, where we're not really doing anything to it, because it's just all masonry rubble that got dumped from, you know, from the masonry.
So the town will send it to mow it periodically?
So that, yeah, that'll, yeah, that'll just get added to our, you know, some stuff will be monthly, some stuff will be quarterly, some stuff will be annually.
That's in that last slide.
Yeah, and that will be getting to the, oh, we didn't get to, so this is a cross-section, oh, here, go ahead, you do it, you drew it.
Yeah, this is a cross-section of the riprap that we saw on the previous, um, slide, so...
So this is the pipe coming down off of Bird's All, discharges into, uh, you know, ten-inch-thick area of modified riprap. The riprap sits on top of six inches of inch and a quarter stone, which sits on top of some geotextile fabric. That way you don't get erosion scour underneath it.
And then that bottom picture, we have the wetland and sediment four bay cross-section, so that first where Jim, that first section where Jim's pointing at, that's gonna be that sediment four bay that catches anything that didn't get caught by the, by the riprap. And then once that overflows, it's gonna head into that wetland on the right.
And it's low...
Will that catch basin be part of your maintenance vacuuming program?
So that's the thing, you, you will sweep Bird's All Street first, then you suck out the basins, then you clean out the four bay. This would probably be annual. The others would happen, you know, every time we go up to lake and do basin, which is, uh, seems like every month. Then what comes down in here should be really low maintenance. That's the whole point of the four bay and all the pre-treatment devices. And then this, this would have some annual, it would be looked at annually. It would probably only get maintained once every couple of years. Once it gets grown in, kind of like the one over at Pearson School, it'll need to be maintained a little more frequently, but until it grows in that first couple of years...
Is that maintenance program part of the application?
Yeah, so that's next. We didn't really, we didn't write it out exactly. There's, there's a, there's a planting plan that hasn't been, hasn't been done. We know the plants we're gonna put in, we just don't know where it's gonna be spotted to, uh, to look good. And then, yeah, it's just, it's just simply a, you know, it's maintaining a, a vegetated area. You gotta keep it from getting too crazy. The hard part is invasives. You know, no matter what you do, that is gonna be the, that's gonna be the most difficult part of maintaining the whole thing, is keeping those out. We're, we're embarking on a somewhat of a management, invasive management plan. At Public Works now, it's, it's a daunting, really daunting problem. But, yeah, that's, the regular maintenance is easy. It's, it's the invasives that are gonna be the hard part.
Alright, is there anything, any questions or concerns on the part of the commission? Alright, is there anybody in the audience who would like to address the commission regarding this application? Okay, do we want to continue this, this conversation for next month, or do we want to close the public hearing?
Well, were you gonna make the adjustment with the overflow?
Yeah, we can certainly, you know, like, protect the town.
We could make that a condition of approval.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, if you can do it that way, then we'll close it if it's a condition.
Probably a level spreader is built.
Right.
All your water's gonna be directed into a certain spot as time goes on. Certain vegetation grows, the ground goes up, you got frost bees, and you end up in one spot. And I think it's a positive.
I think we'll, I'm comfortable making it a condition of approval, but it probably won't become, come before us again. So can you guys review that condition and satisfy the needs of the commission so that, you know, it works? So let's put it that way.
Absolutely.
We're good? Alright, uh, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Sure, I'll make a motion to close I W W C twenty-five dash twenty, Town of Winchester, for, uh, Proba and Bird's All Street, uh, wetland and drainage, with the condition of having the overflow...
Well, we didn't, we didn't vote on that, so let's just close the public hearing. And then when we go to vote on it, we'll make that a condition.
I got you, okay.
Is there a second, Gary? All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Alright, it becomes unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, uh, under old business, I W W C twenty-five dash twelve, Ken Hawkins is the applicant. The address is four oh six A East Wakefield Boulevard, and they want to repair approximately twenty feet of the stone wall and re-point the remainder of the wall as necessary. Thank you, Jim.
Jim, yeah, 'cause Rob's gonna use it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ken Hawkins, Ken Mark Company?
Okay.
I'm Matt Hawkins, his son.
Is that good or bad?
Sometimes good, sometimes bad.
Alright, let's get this moving. Alright, you, you told us last month that you want to repair part of the wall. We didn't see any pictures of what you wanted to do. I think we had asked for pictures.
Asked for a larger plan.
I'm sorry.
Asked for a larger plan, which I said, I...
Say it again?
Asked for a larger plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think they satisfied, they accepted, which we have now.
Thank you. So I have a question on the plan. This, this is an older plan that stuff was done before, right? So you're not doing anything to the driveway.
For informational purposes, is probably why we're here for the third time.
No, the driveway was, if you drive down that one, you're, you live right there.
Yeah, I'm a couple doors down there.
Yeah, so it's, if you drive down there, it's exactly, as per plan, you can look at it.
Okay, I've just seen it from the shorefront, so I really looked at it.
Alright. Any other concerns or questions regarding the application or the applicant?
I think they met them all.
Yeah, when will you, when are you planning on doing this, at the deep drawdown?
Yes.
And, and how long you think it's gonna take you?
Uh, less than a week, you know. We really don't know how deep the water is there. I can tell you, it's, the water has always been...
On, on, in a normal drawdown, do you have access to the bottom of the wall?
No.
You do not?
No, last year.
Okay.
We don't know till yet.
No, we don't know.
So the full drawdown?
Less than. It's not that big.
What kind of remediation do we need set up there?
Well, three-pointing, right?
What's that?
Yeah, you're gonna wanna protect the lake bed, where, in your work area. What do you plan to put down? Plywood or...
Yeah, we could put plywood down.
Yeah, just make sure you catch anything that drops and, you know, remove it.
Yeah, okay.
When you get set up, call in, have Jeff take a look at it.
Okay.
Let me know if I need waiters or how we're doing. Okay.
Alright, is there a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve I W W C twenty-five dash twelve. Repair approximately twenty feet of stone seawall, re-point remainder of wall as necessary.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Before we get into voting, how much of a bond do we want?
Do we need a bond for re-pointing?
This is not re-pointing.
Oh, I, I missed it, I just read.
Yeah, there are, there are parts of the wall that don't exist, so it's not re-pointing.
Okay, I missed it.
Yeah, no, no, I, you know...
I got you, I wasn't here for a week or...
I took pictures of the site. There are parts of the wall that don't exist. Thousand dollars, good? Yes, no, honey? Plenty? Okay, before you begin, you'll notify them and then post a bond, cash or whatever they say.
We gotta vote on it, right?
What's that?
Gotta vote on it?
We didn't vote on it yet. Okay, all those in favor of approval?
Make a motion?
I did, I think we did.
I made a motion.
Okay.
Did someone second it?
Yep.
Come on, we're fast. All those in favor of approval? Frank, you voting?
Yep.
Alright, unanimous? Okay, so there's a thousand dollar bond that has to be posted. I'll let Jeff know when you begin the work, and when you finish, you'll get your money back.
Yep.
Okay?
Okay.
Good luck with it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next application, uh, twenty-five dash seventeen. The applicant is Rich Nadella. The location is seven thirty-four Lake Drive. The proposal is to remove, uh, second floor of an existing house, detached garage and shed. So you're gonna remove the attached garage, you're gonna remove the shed, the word existing continues, and construct the second floor on the house and a new attached three-car garage. Before you begin, for clarification, you're not doing anything at all on the waterfront?
Absolutely not.
Okay, go ahead. Tell us what we don't know, because you were in front of us last month, yeah?
I, I will, actually, the only comment that we had last month was that the word Highland Lake was missing from the impervious, impervious plan.
I'm glad you paid attention.
And I...
I hope you fixed the voice.
It's on.
It's, it's my omen, it's just me. I get here and it just goes.
Yeah, they're still, they're set to the right channels.
You have a question?
Yes.
Uh, the latest and greatest plans, uh, which was revision two. So here is the word Highland Lake on the impervious plan. However, after listening to you talk last month, I did make one other change to this plan. And that was, I'll make it.
Are you fighting against each other, you know?
It says false.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I have others that need assistance. Anyway, um, we made other, I made one other revision to the plan. The footing drain water and the roof leader water, which we showed you last month, was going to go into that extremely large, and, and it's, it has two layers of filter fabric in there, and you saw pictures of them, that they laid the filter fabric in there. One of the things, though, is that it's all clean water. None of the water that makes it to that stone is going to be running across the grass or running anyway. So when it gets there, there was talk about that it, it gets hot, whatever. So we decided we would spread the water out, not just get the pipe in daylight directly into the stone, but at the end, now we have twelve feet of perforated pipe. So as the water goes in there, it has a chance to spread out before it starts to go into the ground. So we did it on both sides of the property, and you could see the, oh, you can't see the red cloud.
Can't see anything.
Keep working on it, though.
Yeah.
Jeff, does it matter which television you pointed at?
This remote specifically for, for the big one.
So I don't know if you have these red clouds on your plan revision two, but as these leaders come down into that very large stone, eight feet deep, it's like six feet wide, and, um, it's all just crushed, very, very clean washed stone. Has two layers of filter fabric, one at the one-foot depth, one at the four-foot depth, that also acts as filtration for the water as it gets in there. But now, instead of just, like I said, just dropping the pipe right into the, we're gonna spread it out at the end with T and twelve feet of perforated pipe.
And that's behind the, adjacent to the lake wall? That's adjacent to the lake wall?
Correct.
Rob, are you considering that, putting those leaders into the stone? Are you considering that for the additional five percent for the L I D?
Well, it, it, it takes into account the extra five percent.
It does.
So there's a calculation, which I put on the plan over here on the side, that takes into account the volume that's going in there and that we have more capacity than there is volume going in there using the Connecticut D P's one point three inches. Now, it used to be one inch of, now it's one point three, so it accounts for that volume plus. So, um, those were the only, I mean, that was the one correction that you had asked us to make in the last plan. And then I added this to make things even a little bit better as, as the water gets down to the...
Well, Rob, just in general, is that something that's safe, like L E D or L I D guidelines?
Yeah, but that's just a...
Considers part of, well, he's trying to get at, is that a, is that a definition of L I D guidelines that gets you up to twenty percent?
We're not looking to get to twenty percent, we're actually reducing it.
Well, I guess for other purposes.
We're reducing, reducing service on this stuff. But like, if it was running, I could show you how much we did, but this is...
No, I understand that, I'm, I'm with you.
There was a double question.
Yeah, try to answer one at a time.
Alright, go ahead.
Well, does that qualify you for the additional five percent? Can you use that as an L... Can you use that as an L I D, as a rain garden or as retention galleys or the, is that... Does the state consider that as...
Yes, that's why I did the calculation to prove that we could make that. Give them the extra five percent.
All right, anybody, any other concerns?
No, no. I would just, I think traditionally, you, when you talk about a leaching galley or a rain garden, it's away from the lake wall. You're not using it in this particular application, I don't think, but I think that's what you're getting at.
Well, we understand that it's the best, the cleanest water coming off the roof. Gary's cleaned that up, cleared that up. And, but I'm just wondering if by putting it into that gravel, does that qualify you, any homeowner, for the additional five percent allowable?
I believe it does, because we're infiltrating the water back into the ground before it makes it to the lake water. And we're filtering that water three times now. Once, there's gonna be fabric underneath the perforated pipe. Foot below that, there's gonna be another layer of fabric, and then at the four-foot level, there's even another layer. Before it makes it out to the weepold, makes it to the lake, it'll not only infiltrate the water back into the ground, but it'll filter it, filter in clean water and before it enters the lake.
We had this twice last month, you and Stan Zialli, both putting the roof leaders into the gravel. And I don't remember seeing that as long as I've been here.
Well, our prior commissions were doing, and asked a lot of them to do, and there's a reason why this stone is there, is that when they were rebuilding their stone walls, they would always ask, say, "It's not a requirement, but we're asking this of you, could you put a two-foot wide buffer of crushed stone right behind the wall?" And, you know, most of the applicants wanting to get their stuff approved would agree with that. So this is one of those instances, and I wanna use it to take advantage of the fact that not only, if this was just stone, it would be one thing, but the layers of fil, I can't show you the photos. The layers of filter fabric actually enhance...
So this is a system we're gonna start seeing a lot, I guess.
Well, I, and I, and I spread it out both ends, instead of dumping it all into one end.
No, it's good. I'm just talking in general.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to, but there's been talk about infiltrators and other things, but there are some properties on the lake it could work with, there are some properties on the lake it can't work with, depending on the level of the water, and you have to bury those, leaching galleys. And, you know, if you can't bury them, then they're not gonna be able to do what they do.
Right, there's a lot of ledge.
So finding a place to do something like this is, I think, better than rain gardens. Rain gardens introduce nitrogen and all different nutrients that it picks up and overflows, and then that goes into the lake, and at least this has no chance of that happening.
Are there any other questions from anybody?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
And forgive me if you said this at the last meeting, Rob, when I wasn't seated then. There's a little bit of a grade on the driveway, the existing driveway that I assume is gonna carry over to the new driveway unless... I mean, I can see there's looks like at least a five-foot differential. And you have a drain on the south, you have the water draining on the south side of the house, and I see a little drain by an arrow. Is that just draining into the yard with the assumption that it will percolate?
Here on the north side?
The south side.
It's extremely flat, and we have it swelled. There's only a four-foot grade from the front of the house to the rear of the house. It's gonna be extremely flat, it won't even make the lake, that water. So there's not enough of a watershed there for it to make the lake, because there's two catch spaces. One directly in front of the property and one on the property, which used to...
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for, where is that catch basin? Oh, right here?
And there's this one, and there's this one. Currently, this one sits in the middle of that.
Right.
And we've removed it from the asphalt.
You're gonna expose it.
And put it in grass. So this way, we don't have that direct runoff of silt and sands and all that other stuff making it, and they're carrying other nutrients that we don't want in the lake.
Right.
So we have an opportunity here to take advantage of the property by, what I always attack at the lake property, I always try to make everything less non-conforming than it already is. In this case, the impervious surface is extremely non-conforming. You know, if I knew that wasn't organized, I had my stand...
Went from forty-eight and a half to thirty-nine.
All this blue is asphalt. Exists, proposed.
Right.
So the base of is right here, and it picks up everything, because that's where everything goes. So now, at least, it'll have a chance to get the grass between asphalt and that, and then it'll help that, consider it.
I saw a lot of grass on the right side, the north side of the house, as opposed to the other side.
Here, now, there's even more. So this is what you had before, what you see in white.
Right.
Now we have all of this, all of this, all of it.
Okay. All right, any other concerns on the part of the commission, questions? All right, do we have a motion for approval? And keep in mind the bond? And if there are any conditions of approval? So let's make a motion to approve first.
I'll make a motion to approve I W W C twenty-five dash seventeen, four seven thirty-four Lake Drive. The applicant is Richard Nadella.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Jeff?
No, as far as conditions, I don't believe there are any conditions for this in terms of a bond. We're not doing any waterfront, so that their bond would be under, you know, the building and zoning or something else. So no bond required.
You're digging some trenches right up to the lake wall.
Yeah, we are doing, right up the lake wall, there's work.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with the bond.
Thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they have a good erosion and sedimentation plan.
And it's pretty flat.
We do have it completely, all lower.
All right, all those in favor of approval? Unanimous? Okay, thank you very much. All right, the next application, twenty-five dash eighteen. The applicant is Sean Zialli, five oh four East Wakefield Boulevard. Being the public hearing is still open and is continued, then we'll continue the application itself until next month? Is that, technically, is it our request or because it's public hearing, it's still...
Public hearing, U S thirty-five days to close the public hearing. Yeah, so you're good, you just continue the application.
So this will be continued, twenty-five dash eighteen? Is there a motion? Mary Ann?
Sure, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for application I W W C twenty-five dash...
We continue the application because the public hearing is open?
Right.
That's really, okay. Second?
Second.
Doesn't matter, Gary? All those in favor of continuance? Unanimous? Okay, thank you very much. The next applicant is twenty-five dash nineteen, Evan McDermott at eight thirty-two East Wakefield Boulevard, and he wants to repaint, repoint the existing wall.
Yeah, so if you remember correctly, Mr. McDermott is in Georgia, and so we have him on teams. I think he can hear, and if you wanna go ahead and speak, Evan, we wanna just make sure that we can hear you.
Evan, can you hear us? We can't hear you.
This is mic off.
Is your microphone on? Oh, I can hear him just a, oh, you know what, it's probably a settings problem on my end, hold on, I'm sorry. Because I need to get it to the TVs.
Yeah.
Try that.
Now we can.
Crystal clear, and I can see you all.
We're good now.
All right, first question. Are there any, did you leave any horses in that trailer?
Yeah, I know, can you believe that neighbor? Boy, he's pushing me around a little bit. Yeah, no, that's a, that's a big trailer, isn't it?
Is it empty? I don't wanna call animal control.
I think he's gonna move furniture in that, I don't think he's taking animals anywhere. I think that's a moving thing.
Anyway, talk to us and tell us what you exactly wanna do. Any difference from last month?
No, sir, we are still on the track to get some cement towards the bottom of the seawall, which will be exposed for the first time in five years. I've had a couple contractors come by. Some of them don't think there's even that much work to do at all, which was kinda pleasant. But I would like to have someone go down there and take a good look when we get the low draw, the low drawdown. Yeah, so basically, we're just trying to get some cement between the rocks. The wall's in actually very good condition, it's just I'm trying to get ahead of any situations event, potential situations going forward, and take advantage of the opportunity of a large drawdown.
I happened to, I visited your site, and I agree, I didn't see a whole lot of need to do very much there. But again, the application is before us, anybody with any opinion on this?
No, it looks good.
Yeah, very straightforward.
Do we need any bond because he's gonna be on the lake bed?
It'll allow us to maintain, are we gonna start putting bonds on maintenance?
No, I don't, I don't think there's no bond.
No, but I think same question as before, we want him to protect the lake bed when he's standing on it, working on it.
Yeah.
So the condition would be to use...
Put plywood or something?
Plywood is probably the most common.
I'm gonna get plywood shoes for all my kids when they're screwed up. You touched the bottom of the lake. What are we doing?
To buy. All right, who wants to make a motion? Frank, you said you wanna make it?
No, I didn't say it.
Oh, okay.
All right, I'll do it. Motion to approve I W W C twenty-five dash nineteen, eight thirty-two East Wakefield Boulevard, repointing of existing lake wall.
I'll second it.
All those in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Glenn, I appreciate your patience, and have a great night.
Yeah.
You guys are working overtime.
Hope your wife is well.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome, bye-bye.
You guys have a good evening.
Likewise. Thank you, Jeremy. Next application is the town of Winchester, twenty-five dash twenty. We closed the public hearing on this, so are there any other concerns or questions regarding this?
Yep, no, they did a very good job on it.
Anybody from the town wanna say last minute, anything? Nothing? All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve I W W C twenty-five dash twenty, town of Winchester. Construct wetland for drainage along Birdsall Street.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Gary? All those in favor?
A bond? We have a condition.
A condition, I'm sorry, go ahead. You wanna read it into the record?
How did we word that exactly?
Hard pipe, hard piped overflow?
Outfall.
Outfall.
Outfall, outfall. Eggwall and outfall.
Say it again, say it again, Frank.
Proposed eggwall and outfall pipe from the wetlands connected to the existing drainage system.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Anything else? No bond?
Not, Gary.
Okay, all those in favor of approval? It's unanimous, thank you very much. You're welcome.
I don't need my lap.
All right.
We've got the plans in the portal.
Just again, from an awareness point of view, we have all of new business and agent determinations and everything else on the agenda. We have about an hour, so...
I'll be quick.
Be my guest.
Last time you mentioned I was talking too fast, and that was the reason I was talking fast, because...
You're taking up some of your time, so let's go.
For the record, my name is Robert Colubella, I'm a senior project manager with Haley Ward.
And you're here representing the applicant for twenty-five dash twenty-three, Richard and Paula Knight?
Yes.
Two twenty-nine West Wakefield Boulevard. And the proposal is to construct a new storage building with a deck above the roof line and associated site and stormwater improvements.
Okay.
Introduce yourself again.
Once again, this is Robert Colubella, I'm a senior project manager with Haley Ward. I'm here representing Richard and Paula Knight. The plan you have on the screen right now is existing conditions, and as you, that's all that is. Go to the next sheet, please. All right, this is the demolition and removal plan. All that area that you see, that dark gray, is all as...
Use your mouse, or you don't have one?
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
That gray area around the building is all asphalt, and all of that asphalt is going to be removed. So there's a shed up in the upper left-hand corner, the dark gray. That shed is getting removed and replaced with a smaller shed. So as far as removal goes, there's a set of wood steps and concrete steps there coming out. The side entrance, it says a roofed stoop over there next to the bulkhead, that's gonna be removed as well. So we're getting rid of a lot of impervious up around the building that has been contributing to issues in the front yard, but we have a drain there now. So proposed is the next sheet. So the applicant is proposing a deck over a storage area, and it is only three hundred and twenty square feet, and it's gonna be built into the hillside in front of the building. So the reason that we put it there is for most prudent and feasible spot that we could put it. Putting it on his property across the street would really be closer to the lake and even be more of a problem with, you know, with wetlands. We don't, we don't wanna start digging, you know, ten feet off the lake. So then we thought about, well, could he put his storage area behind the house? And all the grades there don't really work for that, it's very, very steep behind the house. And we have, he has watered up, sometimes comes down there, it's only intermittent. And so by removing the roof and porch next to the bulkhead, initial plan was to build a deck, and the deck meets all the requirements for a deck in the H L D. It's nine feet, it's further than nine feet off each of the side yards. And I do have the twenty-foot setback line running right in front of the deck, so that's the twenty-foot line. So the deck is conforming. However, the storage facility underneath it is non-conforming, so that's why, that's a whole Z B A issue. So we pushed it back into the hillside as far as we can while making the stairs and the new entrance into the house in the front of the house. And then we added some stormwater features and a bioswell to control stormwater runoff that he's, he currently has. So behind the house, there's water, it's underground water that is, is sometimes gets into the cellar, and we're trying to look for a way to kinda move that water away from there. So we have a perforated pipe going along the backside of the building, and it stops being perforated as it makes its way around the corner between the shed and the building. And it's solid, and then it dumps into the bioswell, which there's detail of on sheet five, so you could see the bioswell, it has a yard drain in there. So what we've done is there's a mulch filter layer, you can see it down here, the section through the bioswell. They have a granular fill wrapped in filter fabric at the bottom around the pipe.
Can you point to that, if you can?
That's sheet five. Little lower, keep going, right there in the middle. So right there is the base of the bioswell, and we have a prepared soil mixture of fifty percent sand, twenty percent compost, and thirty percent topsoil as a filter layer. And water will go through that filter layer, then into the, through the fabric, into the gravel perforated pipe to take the water out. Now, not only do we have that there, and we're gonna allow that water to infiltrate back into the ground rather than just running down the, right now, there's two discharges that just discharge from, one neighbor has a discharge from their property to the property line, and this neighbor has a discharge over to their property line. And they just, they're just daylight. So at least this, now we have a chance, you know, because they're going to do something here, we have a chance to actually clean... we have a chance to actually clean the water now and get it back, get it into the ground. So one of the things I did was I raised the yard drain within the bioswelle to provide at least, not only as it's filtering, but provide at least another nine inches to a foot of water before it even starts to go down the drain and, and it back into the pipe and then down to the area that it was daylighting before. But we are protecting that, which it has no protection. If you'd see on the other side, if you go back to sheet three, the bioswelle discharge over there to the, goes out towards the green there. And we have a crust stone protection, road screen there. And you could see the yard drain and, and the neighbor's yard drain. They just daylight there now with no protection whatsoever. So we're trying to limit any water to even get there. I'm hoping most of it will infiltrate into the ground. And not only is the bioswelle have those two layers, but it also has a perforated pipe below it to gather the water and even further make, give it a better opportunity to get into the ground and infiltrate the ground. So the impervious, which is on sheet four, looks like this. So if we can get both of them in there at the same time, okay. So it's a decrease of not much, but goes from seventeen percent to sixteen and a half percent by removing all the asphalt from around the building and, you know, the roof. And then, you know, the deck, the building under the deck, the, the storage facility that's going under the deck is, I mean, it would be a storage facility. And the deck is allowed by Z B A reg. It would be a storage facility anyway under the deck, why would you build the deck if they wanted it to be? But too close to the road, they're not here all the time. Worried a little bit about that, still the reason why they were worried about it across the street too. So, you know, they just have a closed building under there with a ramp, a little tiny ramp and a, a grass ramp, by the way. And, because that was something that was asked for previously. And double doors down there. So the construction is, there's enough erosion control to satisfy that we won't make it to the street. Even if we do make it there, you'll see there's an existing catch basin on sheet three. In the bottom southeast corner of the property, there's an existing catch basin, not on his property, but it's on town property. And this catch basin does not go across the street to this other catch basin. This catch basin runs along, parallel to West Wakefield and discharges over down at Pratt's House, just about two houses down and then crosses down-
It's not on the lakeside of West Wakefield.
It's on the other side.
Is that functioning, do you know?
Yes.
Okay, no, I just saw this filled with water. I was like, hmm, is this-
Is that roadway always this filled? So Mr. Knight, since he's purchased a property, goes in with the catch basin across the street. He says he's always, every spring, he's constantly pulling out all the sand that's in there and trying to just keep it open all the time. He maintains it, even though it's not his.
From a town perspective, I mean, maybe Jim at the end of this meeting can attest that. Something doesn't look right with those.
Yeah, you know, they're there, they, they're town owned.
Yeah.
Town, and, and so we're protecting those during construction, even though I don't believe the, any, you know, because how small this construction site is, I don't believe any, any, there's any problem with protecting the lake, both in the permanent proposed situation and during construction temporarily. Because for during construction, we have enough erosion control in here.
Yes.
We're protecting the basins. We have a concrete wash, washout area. I know it says H B, but there'll be straw bales there. I don't know. This was before, this is before, you know, we were talking about the rule change and then, but those will be straw bales. As a matter of fact, if you do next, this, you're only accepting the application this month. So if we get to next month, then there is, by then I'll have those changed over to straw bales before-
Submit a minute early?
That meeting. Oh, the reason I first done the agenda is because I submitted this over a month ago, I think in April.
So you're making up the impervious surface that you're removing with the building?
Yeah, for the most, for the most part, it does. If the building wasn't, we've decreased it a little bit. But if, if there was no storage facility going under this and we were just to put crust stone there, we would be decreasing it by a lot. But considering the storage building underneath, it's going to have a roof.
Yep.
And water's just going to flow back towards this lawn drain, picked up and discharged up to the bioswelle. So we, we've taken a property that allows the water to just kind of run off the property and down to these drains and try to minimize it by infiltrating some of it into the ground and releasing whatever makes it, you know, above the yard drain and releasing that. And then once again, cleaning it again as it, as it discharges, where it's currently discharging now.
Okay, any other concern, the questions on the part of, from the commission to the applicant?
Just one question. The structure obviously going to be all concrete, concrete walls?
No, it's stone.
So you're doing it out of stone?
He's going to have an arc with a key. It's going to be a stone.
Okay, so it's all stone work?
Yes.
Okay, so it's eight-foot tall walls on the backside of it? And what are you proposing for footing drains behind it?
Close to that. Slab on grade, they're not going to put any footing drains unless there's-
The back wall's not eight feet tall?
No, it's not. It's not going to be in the end.
You have a finished floor of eight eighty-eight and you have the elevations up top at eight ninety-seven?
Eight ninety, eight point seven. Yes, in the, in the front where that, but, and it's going to step because this-
No, I understand sides will step down.
So it's going to step down.
But just by code, we have, you have to have some sort of footing drain behind it, don't you?
We'll have them for next plan.
Okay, and I just, that was part of it, and where are you going to discharge that footing drain?
Yeah, we'll have that for next plan.
Okay, that was it.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody? Jeff, anything? Hi, there a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept I W W C twenty-five dash twenty-three for two twenty-nine West Wakefield Boulevard.
There a second?
Second.
Mary Ann, all those in favor of acceptance?
Thank you.
It's unanimous. See you next month?
See you next month.
All right. Next application is twenty-five dash twenty-four, Michael Block, nine twenty-eight Main Street. It's a post facto, after the fact application for the removal of an auto business building and regrade the area.
Michael is not able to join us this evening. He's aware that the application would simply be accepted. So he plans to be here next, next month. He and his wife both have COVID. I said just stay away.
Now, my understanding, maybe I'm right or wrong, when he says auto business, this is an old gas station?
Mainway Auto was the signage that was there. I don't know how long it's been out of business, but it's been quite a while.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it was a gas station way back.
Oh, it definitely was.
Yeah. Barber's owned it.
The site's been remediated?
All right, is there a motion to accept without conversation?
Wait.
Go ahead.
No, I thought there maybe was going to be some discussion.
No. I just wanted to clarify for public interest that it's not an auto business.
Oh, okay.
It was really a gas station.
The other thing is, obviously in your notes, you said it was an incomplete application. We could-
As of last week, I think we've since received the application materials, correct?
Most of the application materials. I'm not certain if we've gotten the contractor license, I think is what we're waiting on. Yeah, just for discussion, this was a result of a demolition without a permit.
Right.
So this is, it's, there's a lot going on here. But I did require him to immediately install silt fencing and come in with an erosion control plan for us because of the location to, not the water course in the back of the trailer park, which is the same area, but actually the water course on the other side of the road is under a hundred feet. So we're, we're working with him to try to make it as right as possible after the fact.
Will we have a complete application next month?
We hope to.
If not, then why, please don't put it on the agenda.
Staff can't make that decision. We could tell you, we feel it's incomplete and you could not accept it.
Will we say they're not accepting until a full application's in next, when, when?
Yes, you can do that. We cannot, yes.
Make your motion.
I would recommend that, okay, the application, uh, I'm sorry. I W W C twenty-five twenty-four for nine twenty-eight Main Street. We do not accept the application at this time until a full proposal-
It's incomplete.
Is incomplete and until a full proposal is accepted by the town, it's a-
Is there a second?
Second.
Gary, all those in favor of not accepting the application? I want to be sure of the hands. Mary Ann and, okay, it's unanimous.
Can I just add though, if it was a gas station and it wasn't remediated, that anything-
It's still there.
That anything related to the, like, if there are still tanks underground, et cetera, et cetera, that we need to understand the condition of, that that's part of the application?
Well, you know what, though? Let's see what the application says and when it comes in, then we can have a discussion.
Sure, but if they're going to talk to the applicant anyway, right?
If those questions-
It was definitely a gas station. There's no doubt about it.
Right, so we should know the condition of the tanks, right?
Absolutely.
Guess there's even tanks there.
It should have been pulled out at the thirty-year mark. Who knows?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next application, twenty-five dash twenty-seven, Jim Be- Wait a minute.
It's another incomplete application.
Jim Beyandi, six twenty East Wakefield Boulevard. Had stone veneer to existing top of the lake wall. Should that word be there? Is the applicant here?
I think so.
No.
All right.
I could, I, this one you couldn't drive down. I mean, you could, but I didn't drive down there. We don't really know if it's-
Completed or re-com-
Full front veneer or a cap.
Application, there's no survey, there's no plan.
What's that?
Yeah, I would imagine it's a full front veneer.
I guess what I'm saying is we, we don't have to accept this one either.
Any suggestions from the-
Well, my question to the applicant was how thick the stone veneer was going to be and if he had a survey of his property, because as we know, not all walls are completely up to the property line. So does he have enough room to do that without encroaching over his boundary? So kind of a stickler here, but knowing that we want surveys and we want to make sure people are staying within their boundaries, I think it's fair questions.
So the suggestion would be to accept without prejudice or not to accept because it's incomplete?
That, that's your call.
Well, since it's real, right on the lake, I'd say not accept. You don't know what it's going to leave.
Is that a picture?
There's a picture, it's right on it. But the, the problem with some of this stuff, okay?
Wait, before we get into the discussion, do we want to accept it and talk about it? Or do we want to not accept it? Then let's spend the time next month talking about it.
Yeah, I think if there's no survey, we shouldn't accept it.
Well, I mean, do we need, I'm looking at these pictures. I mean, do we need, I mean, it's a very established, fairly wall. I don't know if we need necessarily a survey for it. It's, I mean, from the picture, you can see what it is, right?
Well, I mean, I guess I'm speaking to Jeff's point about not knowing whether or not the work will encroach beyond its boundary line.
The question is, the wall is there, we've got a concrete plane and he's going to add four, four inches of veneer-
Right, I get it.
-in front of it, so he's four inches further into the lake. And so that's a call for you all to make, really, not for us. We requested a survey so that we could verify, you know, the location of it now.
We decided where the location, everything is according to the boundaries of the label.
But it's not on-
We just say once that four inches, it's one point five.
I think that was a response that you got, right?
Yeah, one and a half.
Oh, one and a half.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't remember where I came from.
But it's not uncommon to simply accept it and not discuss it and then next month begin the conversation as to what we want.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
You know, that's, I think that's where I'm leaning. Anybody?
You think correspondence with him?
I, I asked him these questions in the portal. He called in, spoke with Shane either earlier today or yesterday. I can't remember exactly. He answered, you know, how thick the veneer was going to be, but he, I'm not sure if he has a survey yet, so.
You know, one thing, if you look in this, it says, "I want to add veneers to the lake wall in front of my property, protect the wall from the elements and improvements." But he's saying if it only would take two to three days, I'm wondering if it's a cap. Because I mean, I feel like it's, put a veneer across the whole front or just a cap. It seems like it would be a pretty big job.
We don't know, we don't know where he wants to put the veneer, do we?
Yeah, that's what I mean. That's why I'm wondering if he, is it maybe a cap? Because that's going to take more than a couple of days.
Relate to why he's not going to be here tonight?
Let's, let's limit the conversation to one at a time. So go ahead, Gary, Russ.
Well, my only thought was looking at the picture, just by default, it's a pretty long wall.
Do we want to accept the application or not? That's the question.
All right, then I won't say.
No, no, you want to accept it, make a motion to accept it and will not discuss it.
Yeah.
And they lose a month's worth of time because they don't know what we want.
I say don't accept it because you don't know what it is.
Okay, then make a motion.
Well, I would say, I don't know. I make a motion not to accept I W W C dash twenty-five dash twenty-seven for Beyandi at six twenty East Wakefield Boulevard for lack of-
Incomplete.
Incomplete.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Jeff, all those in favor of not accepting? It's unanimous, thank you very much. Application, I W W C twenty-five dash twenty-nine. The applicant is Jocelyn Gold Brunson, five twenty-two West Wakefield Boulevard. Oh, look at this, live bodies. There you go. And the proposal is to remove overgrown brush and vines on the property and to remove dead trees and limbs. Please introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Jackie Gold Bronson.
Pete Gold Bronson.
Okay, talk to us.
Hi, yeah, so we just bought the property at five twenty-two West Wakefield Boulevard in December. And it's a pretty rundown property. I think it was on the market for about two years. I don't think it's been occupied for fifteen years or so. So it's quite a bit of land, just, just overgrown. And as we think about like what we even want to do with the property, it's hard to even get started without even like knowing what we have there. So we would like to just remove, it's not a clearing of land or an excavating of land or anything like that. It's removing brush, overgrown vines, all big healthy trees staying. As far as like actual tree removal, there's like two big dead trees, so those are sizable. But otherwise, it's just shrub, brush and just, you know, all of that.
Are you removing the stalks?
No.
Are you doing all this again?
Nope.
The only damage that would take place is what you're going in to get your brush out.
Correct. At this point, we kind of just want to see what we're, we're dealing with, correct?
So the issue with this was, the project was brought to my attention by actually one of our zoning commissioners, but there was no erosion controls up. A lot of the cuttings had entered the water body. They were still there when I inspected. So we put a stop work order basically and requested the soil erosion control plan. This property is very wet, so it gets torn up pretty easy and, you know, all that, so.
But still, you know, it's maintenance. Maintenance that you have to be diligent about what you're doing as far as protecting the lake. I don't know how far you go. I think, you know, you ever put silt fencing? Going through brush or vines, it's virtually impossible to put silt fencing.
Well, it's already a part, so it's already a part, the clearing's already been partially done.
This is quite a steep property, right?
No. Right on the, yeah.
There's already, there's already the straw water.
Oh, 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 okay, that property.
So there's already straw water around a bunch of it, a good section of it. The best way going under is silt fencing, but straw water, you don't upset the ground to start it.
So that property, since you bought it, have you been in the water and have you stood on the lake bed?
I swam a couple of times.
Because it's pretty mushy, right? You have like a kind of swamp-like condition there?
It depends on where you are. There's part of it that's actually pretty sandy and then there's, say, half is sandyish and half is kind of swampy or soft, yeah.
Yeah, so-
How much waterfront do you have?
It's, it's inside of the, it's right next to Sutter Brook.
I know where it is, yeah. I was on it today.
A lot of waterfront.
Yeah, it seems like, you don't go over to where that bridge is, do you? Is that the neighbors?
Yeah, no, that's, that's ours.
That's ours.
Oh, that's yours, wow.
I brought these for the next meeting. Shane asked for like the full size and she said I could give them to her today. But, so I do have nine copies of the big thing, if you want to. But, so I do have nine copies of the big thing, if you wanna.
All right, our concern tonight is, you know, accepting the application and asking for clarification and an understanding of what they wanna do. And if we have any concerns, then we should articulate those concerns now so that they're prepared next month. And if we don't have any concerns, then they'll come back next month and we'll vote. So any concerns, that's the question.
Can we get the plans now? Or you wanna just put them in our packet next week, next month?
Um, yeah, I just, I would like to just, that is a specific area in the lake, it's a little shallower, has a lot of nutrients that come into it from Suckerbrook. And, yeah, anything that could add nutrients to the area, you know, is, is, would create a further negative impact on that area. And we did have our first cyanobacteria bloom last year, so we wanna be very careful about that. So anything that comes before us in the next meeting, just have that in mind when you propose your project.
Well, projects is brush clearing, right? I mean. Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm just, because I was at a site, I just, they put down waddles for some erosion control which not too much land has been disturbed and nobody wants to get in there with equipment when it's really wet. So I don't see what we're really asking for, I mean, they put erosion, they put stuff there and they're cutting out, they're cutting back vegetation. To me, I would accept it.
We'll accept the application.
I mean, I would make a motion to accept it, but that's only one person.
Just wonder if we take the maps now or wait till next month, that's all.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'd rather, I'd rather. I'd like to make a proposal to accept application. I W W C twenty-five dash twenty-nine for five-twenty-two West Wakefield Boulevard. Remove overgrowth brush and vines on property, remove dead trees and limbs. Erosion control is already there.
Is there a second?
No second.
All right, you know, a question that I have to ask is, do we need a public hearing?
No.
No, no, no.
All right, Sid, I'm gonna ask it. Okay, um, all those in favor of accepting the application? All right, unanimous, just leave what you have, if you'd like to, we'll meet with them and discuss it with Jeff and then leave it with them, it's up to you.
Okay, that's perfect.
I mean, we're not gonna wind up with it tonight anyway, so.
We need to review it and, yeah, we'll take it off. Okay.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Okay. Next applic-, this is accepted. Next application is twenty-five dash thirty-two, the applicant is Jen Perga. Three-seventy-eight East Wakefield Boulevard and rebuild two piers under existing dock. For the record?
I'm Jen Perga, three-seventy-eight East Wakefield.
Okay, and you wanna talk to us about your project, Jen?
Um, I think the picture describes it the best, it's just a dock. Jeff came out and took a look this winter when the water was down. And there's two piers, at the top part, they're like roughly four feet by four foot. And you can see on the front one, it, it's really falling apart with the wave action over the years. So my contractor's just gonna take it apart and rebuild it exactly as it is.
Like jack up the dock?
Yep.
Like that?
Yep.
This commission may need to put a cantilever dock in.
Do you want to?
And it's a beautiful dock.
It's gonna be a little hard to get down there. Big crane, maybe.
Looking at the pictures, you're gonna take the whole.
That can do it.
You're gonna take the whole, all those rocks out and then start from scratch, basically.
Put them back, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Putting Humpty Dumpty back together again.
Yes.
You gonna step on the lake bed?
Bare feet.
I don't think it's the stepping that we're worried about, it's the materials on the lake bed.
Plywood understands something, look at this, couldn't put plywood.
I didn't suggest plywood.
What am I gonna say? Plywood's gonna tear the work, you do have to put some kind of tar.
Tar, yeah.
Something by the wall.
Yeah.
Well, do you know at this point, is there any need to be digging into the lake bed? So anything that you take out, the replacement will be on the surface of the lake floor, up, not down. Okay.
Segundo.
Any other questions?
Well, what is the scope exactly, the, like the progression? Don't we usually have a progression of work of what that described? Maybe I'm missing something that describes it a little bit better.
The application is, doesn't have a sequence is what you're asking for?
Yeah, I mean typically we do that where we don't know, is it gonna be, some of the questions we ask, is it gonna be hand dug? Are you?
It is by hand.
Yeah, like usually we have a scope for the next one, we have a, a sort of a scope and sequence.
There's a narrative, but not a, not detailed.
Do you want it more numbered?
Yeah, like we usually require that correctly.
Yeah.
What, what are we, what are we really doing?
A more detailed narrative?
More detailed narrative, what are we doing, what are we doing to protect, you know, the, the, the lake bed as we're doing this work?
Are you recommending tarts?
Well, looking at the post, no possible way you can apply it though.
No.
It's too rocky, too stubborn. So tarts.
Okay.
Stuff like that outside of work areas.
Okay.
I'd like to see which pier he's gonna work, work on first. Because I wanna, I wanna make sure that the deck on top of it is secured, that you don't have more of a problem.
Okay.
So if you let us know which one first.
How, how is he gonna jack up the dock? With jacks on the lake bed?
I don't know if, without the stone.
What's that?
Without the stone.
Well, he could do, I mean, as far as the sequence, you could do the first, you could do, you could jack it up off with the existing second ones, lift the whole thi-, he's not taking the whole thing out, right? You could, you could jack it up so that you had a little room under the first one, work on the first one, lower that to it and then.
Right.
Let's not design, let's not design the project.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, it's, you know. That's all we wanna see is the sequence of it.
I'm asking, yeah, to be in the sequence and the narrative.
Yeah, just the sequence of it.
Any other concerns? All right, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion to accept I W W C twenty-five thirty-two, rebuild two piers under dock at three-seventy-eight East Wakefield Boulevard.
Is there a second? Thank you, all those in favor of acceptance?
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Chris.
Right. It's unanimous, thank you very much. All right, stay right there. Our next application is twenty-five dash thirty-three, the applicant is Catherine Perga. The address is three-sixty East Wakefield Boulevard. And, uh, it's to replace existing riprap lake wall with masonry wall. For the record, you wanna introduce yourself?
I'm Jen Perga.
Representing?
Catherine Perga.
Okay.
And I'm David Batista, I'm licensed professional engineer with Haley Ward here in Winston. And I'm the engineer of record on the project. Okay. We prepared this detailed plan, Kathy Perga owns a one-point-nine acre property on, at three-sixty East Wakefield. It's a long skinny rectangular shaped lot between East Wakefield Boulevard and the lake. And she's got about a hundred and eighty feet of frontage. And I think if we run through the pictures that I took back in December of twenty-three, draw it out, it'll give you some ideas of what things look like on the lake bed. Most of this site, Jeremy can flip through the pictures, is solid bedrock emanating out of the, you can see the sheets of bedrock when you walk up and down the shoreline. So the plan is to, and if we could hold that picture right there. The entire shoreline right now is, is protected with that modified riprap that you see stacked up on a, on a slope. And that was actually a permitted project from decades ago or years ago or whatever. And you can see what happens to the stones, they kinda wave action, they're, they're not large enough to prevent, they're, they're mobile in the face of some of the waves that we see there. So Kathy Perga would like to construct a stone masonry wall right where that riprap is. And so our, our surveyor, Tim Wiley, located the shoreline and the wall would be just behind the shoreline. It's sort of an irregular shape. But you, when you go out there and you, well, you can see it in the picture here, there's different color of stones between stones that are always underwater and stones that are typically exposed to the atmosphere. And so he located the, the changeover spot in many locations and connected the dots to create the shoreline and we're just behind that. So our plan would be to build a, a wall that is two feet higher than the waterline, the present, uh, normal pool elevation of Highland Lake. And that riprap might only go up a foot or so higher right now. So the wall will be sticking up two feet above the water and it would be pinned to the bedrock all along the frontage. The plan is to build this in phases over the course of, we, we planned out four different phases. So roughly forty-five feet per phase. Some may be a little bit longer, some may be a little bit shorter. Whether we do them in four sequential years or wait because of weather or whatever, that's really gonna be up to the applicant as long as the permit's still valid. And so forty feet of wall will be constructed. There will probably be some form of enclosure or tent built over the wall, maybe a ten by ten type of structure so that the masonry in progress can be kept warm overnight, prevent freezing. You don't want the mortar to freeze until it's cured. So it's typically a cold weather scenario and that little shelter would move along the shoreline as the mason works from one end of the face to the other. And once he's done with that, then we're gonna backfill the wall with crushed stone and we're gonna reuse that riprap on top of the wall as sort of a level with the top of the wall going back into the upland by three feet so that any waves that crest over the wall will, will be, the riprap will protect the ground. This is all gonna be handwork, you can see in these pictures that the site is heavily vegetated. If you drive by there in a boat this time of year, you can barely see the house because the hemlocks are kinda growing down. So contractor's gonna have to work around them, the, the owner does not wanna cut any trees or even any limbs. So it's gonna be sort of a cumbersome project. There's really no convenient way to get machinery down here, so it's, it's all manual labor. Every, everything's gonna be hand shoveling, hand moving rocks around. Wheelbarrowing materials up and down to, to get to this work site. The area, the only area for staging, if we could go to the plans, maybe that, on the, we can show you the plans. So the, you can see how irregular the shoreline is and, you know, we're gonna do roughly twenty-five percent per year in four different phases. And you'll see a driveway that comes up from the bottom with a black dash line around it. And the only real area of stockpile material is right in the turnaround of that driveway. So we're gonna use that area for staging of, you know, masonry stone, masonry bags of mortar, whatever, crushed stone. And then they're just gonna have to wheelbarrow it down to the, the shoreline. There'll be a filter sock going between the blue patio that you see on the right next to the house and in the shed that will kind of protect the shoreline area from the, the stockpile area. And then there'll be a piece of that filter sock that's sort of movable every day. So while the contractor's there working, you can pick it up and move it out of the way. And then at the end of the day or Friday before he goes home for the weekend, you can stake it back down. We also are proposing a filter sock out in what's the lake bed and we came up with a detail, there's, you know, it's primarily bedrock out there. And so we came up with a detail to just lay the filter sock along the, the bedrock and then periodically take some of that riprap stone and, and sort of weight it down so that if runoff comes down off the hillside and tries to go in toward the lake, then at least the stones will prevent that filter sock from moving and floating away. So we have an erosion control barrier there. In places, there's some, like between the house and, and where you see that little stairway there, there's some arrows. We've asked, we're gonna ask the contractor to sort of slightly dig a trough through the woods to guide any runoff away from his little work area in that particular phase just as a sort of a, an erosion control measure to keep water out of his face. If necessary, we have details on this plan for a pump facility, like a well point and a filter bag. I don't think the contractor's gonna hit a lot of groundwater. There's, it's very shallow to bedrock to begin with. So like for example, on a day like this morning, there might be water bleeding out of the bank because of all the rain we got the day before.
Right.
That will go away. So I don't think there's, this is gonna be like a serious groundwater problem, but we do have provisions in the erosion control manual for that case, so. And we have a very detailed erosion control plan with a twenty or twenty-one item sequence that explains exactly how the contractor's gonna build this in, for each phase. And it's gonna be sort of a low impact kind of project because it's all manual labor, no machinery, no heavy cutting or anything like that, so.
Do you need a deep drawdown, to do each phase?
No, no, because like for example, in twenty-three, that wasn't a deep drawdown, right? It was only three feet down.
Yeah.
Those pictures that I showed you were, so that's basically what the contractor's gonna be working with, this condition that you see right there.
In the process of rebuilding the wall, is there any conversation with the contractor or thought about taking any of the rock or the, that, that look some big boulders, go back to that one picture? Those rocks that are further away from the wall, removing them or they're staying?
Staying.
They're staying, you're not touching that, okay.
Part of nature.
What's that?
It's part of nature.
Yeah. And where do you propose beginning, which end of the?
Do you have a preference?
It's more, it, it, there, there are places where the water really under, undercuts the shoreline and so it, it's not necessarily a start at one end and end.
You could do ten feet here and ten feet somewhere else?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do like the, the worst, first.
Any weeples in the wall? Any weeples in the wall? To relieve hydraulic pressure?
Planning on it because there's only gonna be two feet exposed.
Okay.
But we could certainly add them.
Just out of curiosity, obviously, you said you'd crush stone back there, but if there's any hydraulic pressure or anything?
Yeah, there will be hydraulic pressure on the wall, but it's gonna be pinned into the rock and it's gonna be massive enough so that, that the hydraulic pressure can push the wall towards the lake.
How, how, from the top of the wall to the lake floor? I know you wanna go two feet above the waterline, but how far below the waterline are you?
Well, if you look at that, the photos, it varies everywhere. In some places, maybe a foot. So for example, when we're right on top of these big, that piece of ledge on the right side of that picture, very little, maybe a foot or a foot and a half on the left side of that ledge right there, you can see maybe that much below water level. And then if you move way over to the left of that picture, there may be places where the ledge is down three or four feet. So you'd have to dig it, dig it out by hand. And that's where you might encounter some groundwater bleeding in from the uphill.
You're gonna get water coming up from the floor also.
Right, so that's why we have this well point and, and a filter bag measure there if he hits groundwater. So the, the height of the wall's gonna vary depending on the surface of the ledge. And if it's down four feet digging and there's no ledge, you know, if there's a big pocket or something, then I'll have to come in there and work with Jen and the contractor to figure out a footing, we would put a footing. But it's mostly ledge. But it's mostly ledge from what I can see, just walking along that whole shoreline. At least sixty or seventy percent of that frontage is exposed better.
When you, when you did this proposal, were you relying on pictures? Or did you look at it last year or two years ago when there was no water and the, the wall was void of water, that you actually saw what you're designing?
Well, I've been there with water in the lake at normal pool elevation. I went there twice to survey the elevation of the water compared to a benchmark that the surveyor left for us.
Were, were you there when there was no water?
Yes, and then I was there, I took these pictures.
Oh, those are your pictures?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, in December of two thousand twenty-three.
No, no, okay.
Yeah, so I've seen it both ways.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
Is there any need for an independent engineer to review this plan?
No.
No.
No, it's very good design.
What's your plan for the dock? Well, the dock is like.
There's no change.
No, no change, it's not, it's not part of the.
No change, so you're gonna sit on top of the wall or you'll build the wall under?
Yeah, they'll probably build some kind of a seat, yeah.
Okay. Is that dock on a pillar too, like yours?
Uh, it's on concrete piers.
There might be pictures.
There's a picture of.
Yeah, there was one, wasn't there?
There was a picture. I think it's the other way. I think it was the first one, maybe.
Was that the one with Tim in it, the surveyor?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
There it is.
I can't see much.
Long luck behind you, Steve.
Yeah, I found pretty tall piers there.
Looks like it's also kind of.
Is it sitting on that boulder too?
Use what you got.
Yeah.
That's crazy.
What'd she say? That's gotta be the deep drawdown, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't remember about.
No, that, that's not, she has a really shallow waterfront.
That looks like it's, looks like it's six feet high or seven feet high.
I don't even know what I'm looking at. Is that, that supposed to be a pier holding up the deck, the dock?
Yeah, there's, there's a boulder there and then you've got what, one, two, three piers on the land side and one there.
Aren't they li, aren't they like five feet tall? Five, six feet tall?
I don't think they're that tall.
No, okay.
The, those scales have to be close to three feet high on the deck, right?
It's hard, there's no.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
There's nothing.
Oh, yeah, scale is strange, it's deceiving, it looks like, it does look like they're much taller than that. I see what you mean.
You know what, we're at a disadvantage in terms of proving this down the road because we're approving it from pictures. And without the evidence of the water being missing to see the reality of what you're showing us, so.
Well, we have survey, the survey went out into the lake bed.
As you survey?
Yes, yes, there's grades that go out into the lake bed. So we were, when we were designing the wall, we could see what the terrain looked like the whole way out into the lake. And we have these pictures, we've seen it with and without water.
And two missed.
And it's a very relatively small wall, except there might be some pockets where it's a little bit deeper.
All right, is there a motion to accept any other, so any other questions before we act through the assembly? You guys good, anything? All right, is there a motion to accept?
I have a motion to accept I W seventeen C twenty-five, the, 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 the replacement of the fifteen, the rap, lake wall, masonry wall.
There a second?
No second.
Thank you. Uh, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Bye, Dave, bye, Jen.
Good night, guys.
Did you go him up?
I'm not yet, but I have.
Okay. All right, we're at a point now where it's five to ten. We said we wouldn't start any new business before that.
That's it.
Let's be, before, we got five minutes, let's be more specific. We can talk about agent determinations and not finish them. We talk about violations and not finish it, uh.
Is there anybody else here for?
Well, Jim, Jim's here, so he should speak to us.
But there's nobody else here for?
Are, are these folks here for an application?
No, we, we did, we went through all the applications.
No, no.
Oh, all right, I thought.
What in the discussion portion?
Oh.
What I'd like to.
All right. Yeah, I thought somebody else had.
You know, what I'd like to spend a couple of minutes on, because that's all we have, is there are two items that are of concern, that are relatively new items. Last month, we sort of started talking about buoys. And this month on our application, we're talking about, or we're beginning a conversation about wake boats. So let's just sort of kick that around for a few minutes and sort of get a sense of where we are or where we wanna go with this. And, um, you know, make the best of the time we have. We can go beyond ten o'clock because we're starting this now, but let's, let's keep it as, you know, you know, get some information out there, but let's keep it sort of brief.
What happened with the boat on the end of the, the other lake is with the wake boats, they pass it, they now pass it or not?
They did.
Uh, waramog, I think you're talking about, yeah, so there, the towns have passed it, uh, but it's at the state level for review.
They missed, that they allowing it or?
No, no, to disallow.
Oh, disallow.
Yeah.
Okay, just for conversational purposes, I think, uh, the maximum size of a, of a, a non pontoon boat on the lake is twenty-two feet.
Correct.
Okay? Um, I would think, and maybe I'm wrong, that most or many of the wakeboard boats are larger than twenty-four feet. Is that fair to say or we don't know? I don't know, again, I don't, I'm not sure.
They, they could be, but not all.
Okay, uh, we can enforce for sure the length of a lake, of a boat.
Correct.
That's just, we can measure.
Yes.
You know, and, so the, the question now is the wakeboard issue, the wake boat issue. Okay, um, some of the lakes are taking action on forbidding wake, wake boats.
Wake surfing boats.
What's the word?
Wake surfing boats.
Work surfing boats. Because the, the design of the boat is to create a wake which in effect disturbs the lake base, the bottom of the lake. And that's something we can't allow to continue to happen if it's happening because, uh, we're here to protect the lake, not to allow people who have devices that are impacting negatively on the lake. So I think that's a discussion that this commission has to sort of keep going all winter long. We're at a good point to have a discussion on it because the boats are coming out of the water beginning October first, because that's when the drawdown starts.
But it's also the, uh, the, the, uh, deterioration of seawalls, personal seawalls.
Correct, yes.
And the lake beds.
And the lake beds, yeah.
The lake beds.
But it's also the, us, the seawalls.
There's a, there's a lot of research on it. I, I think it's, this is a very sort of complex issue to detangle and every lake is different. The science basically, if you read all the studies that are out there and there are tons, they're proliferating. Um, they're basically, generally, there's a consensus that in order not to disturb the lake bed, the wakeboarding boats have to operate in at least twenty foot of depth. Now, we have a pretty deep lake, so that, you know, on its surface, you'd say, oh, well, we're in good shape. But the other side of the recommendation is that, um, you need five hundred to six hundred feet on either side of the boat for dissipation of the wake. And we know we've seen a lot of complaints about wave action damaging people's walls. I really think it is an all winter long kind of project because we all have to educate ourselves about the research. We should probably meet with the waramog people and talk about their process and figure out what their specific issues were.
Just two points, one, you said the impact down towards twenty feet or fifty feet?
Twenty.
Always twenty.
Yeah, it's twenty. So the depth requirement is less of an issue on our lake than it is the dissipation issue because we're such a narrow lake.
What is waramog, I know public, not public, the, the state, DEP is gonna look at this now?
Yeah, they need to ultimately approve the, the ban that's being.
Do we have any timetable or any sense of their behavior over a period of other projects when they'll render a decision?
I, I mean, I, I couldn't tell you, yeah, I couldn't tell you.
I, I think it's the first lake that's done it.
Well, again, you know, we would benefit by knowing where DEP stood on this.
I mean, if we're talking about, when you said five hundred, six hundred feet, not even third bay meets that requirement.
There are parts of third bay that would, actually, and there are parts of second bay that would. But it, it would require a regulation where you're asking those boats to just go straight down the middle and, and then you're into a regulation issue. So I'm just saying, I'm not saying I'm for it, I'm just saying it's complex.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I mean, the way our lake is designed, I mean, you, where you are, you, you got the worst of it despite the narrows.
Yep, right, but there's, there's not tall for a few across.
But I don't, but I don't see anybody down in third bay, down the other end of third bay being any better if it's five, six hundred feet.
Well, I think they said, didn't you say the third?
Would have to be that middle part of third bay, like between where Bristol Cove starts and you get like past Strong's Island, right? Like, that's a nice long area that probably does give you that twelve hundred feet either side.
You know, we measured today, it was thirteen, fourteen hundred feet wide.
Now, these especially designed boats with like water tanks of three hundred, thirteen hundred gallons of water or so, or whatever fluid you want to weigh down.
Yeah, I mean, the Marina, the Marina is doing a, uh, some sort of promotion with Malibu's, I think, this weekend. And they advertise the boat as creating ocean-like waves. And that's part of their advertisement. So, yes, the whole purpose of those boats is to make very big waves.
So there's two issues, right, though, are there two issues? One is that there's lake bed quality, which I think is under this group, obviously, right? And then there's also the issue, and I don't know how this works, of, of impact to seawalls or retaining walls, right?
Well, to the waterfront, so it's, so it's.
Are those kind of two, I mean, they're kind of linked, but they're kind of separate, aren't they? In a sense, like, cause there's stuff that.
They're all under our purview.
Yes, they are under our purview.
Yeah.
So when you say they're under our purview, what, what I think you're saying is that, you know, we can enforce, using that word liberally. We can enforce the damage that a boat will cause to a seawall, my seawall, your seawall, kind of thing?
Yeah, because erosion control is under our purview.
But is that erosion control? Is that, I don't think it's erosion.
I don't think we've used erosion control that way.
Hey, would you know if the, if the wave goes over the wall?
But if there's no seawall.
Well, then it's really erosion control, yeah. And then, I mean, look.
It's a tough thing, there's a lot of research, there's a lot of studies being done, like up in Maine, a lot, I looked at stuff, a lot of Maine stuff is coming out, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues going on.
But there's more to it than just the wake surfing boats. You know, like I was telling Mary Ann the other day, every, you know, I don't get bothered by the wake surfing boats whatsoever.
Where you live?
Where I live.
Yeah.
What I get bothered by are the regular ski boats that are fifty feet offshore looking for a flat water. They go by every morning.
You've got a good spot right by you.
Okay, I've got a free spot.
But in your book, but it, but also like.
You're throwing darts, you're throwing darts at a lot of people.
But they.
One at a time, guys, a hundred feet.
You're throwing darts at a lot of people here. You, you can't, uh, and now if you have a boat that, that is, uh, a wakeboard boat, a wake, a wakeboard or wake, uh, wakes, sea boats or surfing boat, okay? That boat doesn't dissipate anything any different than a regular boat till it has balance. So I don't believe you can.
Right.
Blackball the boat off the lake. I think now you're further on, you're gonna start looking at saying, if we're gonna do this, there is no wake surfing. And waramog did it that way, I believe waramog did it that way.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're, I think you're right.
Anything under twenty-four feet, or twenty-two feet and under, you can't.
No, you're, Gary, you're right, it's not talking about the boat itself, it's talking about the activity.
It's the activity, right. Okay?
Well, boat if it's more than twenty-two feet?
Well, yes, that's.
Yeah, that's already on the boat.
That's different.
That's already separated.
The next problem that we have with all of them, all right, is we have rules and regulations that are installed, right?
That are what?
We have rules and regulations that are in place.
Yeah.
We have no enforcement, and we've never had, we have no enforcement, no enforcement to use. There's people out there with your twenty-four foot boats, twenty-six foot boats. They, they launch at the boat launch, there's no enforcement. There's no enforcement of the boats going close to shore making that way. So. Or those skiers. There's a lot you have, huh? Or those skiers, within fifty feet or. Or the skiers, yeah, but you, they're not supposed to be within a hundred feet. Hundred feet. You know what I mean? So. Now, is that a hundred feet from the dock or the shore? A lot of things we can start with here that are already in place. And by, by starting with that, twenty-four foot boats, whatever, whatever, what's it gonna eliminate? It might eliminate some of the wake surfing people. Those might be some of the boats that are out there that are twenty-four, get them off, you know, can't have.
Enforce what's there already.
That, that, enforce what's there, try that first.
One of the things I was reading about in some of these reports about, that they mentioned the turbidity of, of, of the water, that the wakeboards are churning up the water on the edges, which then creates turbidity change. And we have, we have a record of that by like every, turbidity is measured every week out there, correct, in the summer or every month or something?
Once a month, I think.
Right, so you would start to see, is there an increase potentially in the turbidity over the last year? Whether you could relate that to the boats is another question, but there's, that's one of the things these reports were saying, that it's, it's increasing this, the sediment pairing up, so we would probably see that.
Is the, is, is the clarity of the lake not as clear when they test in August or as they do in April or May? You would tell us that answer.
Maybe.
Well, it should, or it doesn't.
I, yeah, exactly, I, I, that's not gonna give you any definitive because it depends on how, yeah. Like, I, I don't think that the water quality testing is gonna give you any information about what the effects of wake surfing are in a, in a.
But it would tell you if there's a change, if, if you, what direction it's going in, right?
Maybe, but I don't know that you could really attribute it just to wake surfing boats because it depend, like, last year we had so much rain, right? So that was a contributing contributor. This year, we've had so little rain, I think all of us probably have felt like the water's been clearer. So I just think there are too many, uh, variables for that to be a decisive test of the, the, the effect.
Yeah.
You, you know, one thing too is that, um, I believe, you guys can confirm this, that there's funding in the town budget for a study with a focus on the effects of the deep drawdown on the lake. And if there's already gonna be a study of some kind over the winter, maybe we just make it a little bit more comprehensive as it relates to a lot of these issues.
I know the last, I mean, I, I grew there five years ago during the last drawdown. And that summer, next summer, we had a lot of weeds in the area, right? I mean, you couldn't walk into the water, it was just weeds. And then they came up with the second dosage or second, um.
Treatment?
Treatment that they were using, and that seems to have worked. That's why I didn't realize this year they were gonna really do it. I thought there'd be more opposition to the drawdown this year because of what happened in twenty.
And also, I think in the last deep draw, drawdown, there was a creation of a fog across from, uh, Risha Beach. Because what happens is that the ice.
Tatches smoke.
Attach, yeah, and then it can.
That, a couple of years, that happened, that was down before, cause my neighbor, that was why I had.
Yeah, that was ten years ago, not five years ago.
Five years ago, that was ten years, but it was.
Okay, right.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, what I'm saying is if there's gonna be a study, there are so many ecological stressors on the lake, we should do an RFP for a really comprehensive study, right? And I think we should talk about what might go into it.
Again, this is the beginning.
Yeah.
This is the beginning.
You know, and, and that's why I, I, I elected, selected to go to that part of the agenda so that, you know, at least we're, we're.
We can think about it.
Thinking about it and talking about it, uh, and, you know, we have a, you know, quite a while because the reality of it is boats are being, coming out of the water in a month, give or take. And they're not going back into the water until April, May, early, so, again, I don't know if we'll be any closer to a, a solution or a position on it in April or May, but at least.
Yeah, but we should focus on it over the winter, we should really educate ourselves on all the research.
At least, at least, now, get some points that we can start to.
One of the things that came out and, and I met with, uh, Mary Ann and Jeff and the two agents earlier today, and we talked about it very briefly or superficially. And one of the things that came, we were enlightened on is that the state agent who monitors the boat launch, uh, during this, weekends. He is not gonna confront anybody putting any boat in the water, whether it's ninety feet or ten feet.
Or whether it's washed or not, like, let's, like, like, those boats could be bringing hydralith into our.
Whatever, he's not there, all he's interested in is, is there a parking space for the trailer?
Right.
And if you live on the lake and you're not gonna park, he doesn't care, you're not going in the water with your boat. So that's where he's at.
One of the reasons that is, is I found out through the political record here in town is because the governor, when we asked him to buy it, he used federal dollars for that purchase. And therefore it is not designated, it's by us designated as a state pollant. But in the eyes of the state of Connecticut, it is not. But in the eyes of the state of Connecticut, it is not.
I don't, they just-
I don't think that's true.
No, they just, they just did the whole-
Yeah, no, the state, the state paved it and put in the retention pools. It was all, it was too deep.
Paid it and everything else, somebody paid for that. Yeah, that's-
What is the scope of work for that person? What is their job requirement?
I told you, my, my, my take on it.
Just to not let any more boats in when the last-
Well, we had these big, two years ago, and we had that big storm right after the, early July. And we, everybody was complaining because the water was above the boat heads. They couldn't, nobody would stake a step to shut down that boat ramp.
Right, that's exactly the point that Steve made.
Because the state took no responsibility. That's what I was told. They took no responsibility because under their jurisdiction, it's not theirs. We have it as theirs. Under legal law, it is not theirs.
All right, we can, we'll never, we don't know the answer to that.
Well, let's put that into our winter research as well.
That's what I was told by the elected officials.
The bottom line is, he's not gonna enforce any size boat going into the water because that is instructed to walk away from any confrontation at all from what we heard this afternoon. And having said that, we can't rely on the boat launch to measure a boat and say you can't go in the water.
Why can't we rely on our police on weekends? You know, on my way down here, like I say, I live on the south end of the lake. Very, very south end. All the way down to this meeting, I never saw a boat on the lake until I got to the first bay, and I saw one. The police.
Of course, he knew we had a me, he knew we had a meeting tonight.
Doing nothing at a hundred dollars an hour. Who regulates this? This is ridiculous.
Well, that's a separate issue.
Now, do we need to talk about anything else on here, or are we pushing it to the next meeting?
Well, we're past our ten o'clock, but I will just say, uh, we reached out to deep based on our earlier discussion point of buoys. Uh, and we're in the process of setting up a meeting between sta- our staff and their staff. Uh, and it's gonna creep into these other issues as well, so we hope to have some information to report or some, you know.
You know what, I think we, we opened up a Pandora's box, lack of a better way of describing it. And, uh, let's see if we can, uh, you know, make it better. What?
See if we can close it.
Once the worms are out of the can.
Do we have a motion number, Charlie?
Well, you're talking to Jim. They're waiting for us.
Jimmy, you wanna talk to us for two minutes?
Right, so we'll just tell the selectmen to not put it on the agenda until after we discuss it.
And I don't think they're ready to at this point anyhow.
You don't really have a whole lot going on. Once the, once the drawdown starts, we got a few drainage projects, uh, that we're proposing. Really, the main one that needs a, you know, a drawdown, probably doesn't have to be a deep one, but a deeper one does help you get that water level down even further, is right over by, I don't know if anybody remembers where Fazioli's house was back in the day. It's before most of you guys. Uh, it would be just south of Pratt's, um, that stretch, yeah.
On the west side. That's the property right where Mike, the two catch bases, that's where Mike Robert, that's-
Yeah, actually. That's right, that's right.
Two twenty-nine.
Yeah, yeah, we're like two twenty-one to two, to three oh three or something. That area is getting some under drains and some, you know, some basin improvements.
So, the ones in front of-
Yeah, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the one when I was there, looking at two twenty-nine, I'm like, ooh, these don't look like they're in too good a shape. So, those are slated to have some, oh, good, perfect.
Yeah, one of those was mentioned in one of the applications.
Yeah, it was on, it was.
And that pipe is half full that goes from there to Pratt's. There's always a little bit of movement in it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, it's a, it's a tough section. The water level is so high that only so much water can even get through the pipe. It's-
Ah, that's why I saw the water, I understand, yeah.
Yeah, it, it goes both ways through that pipe. The pipe, I believe, is dead level, um, so.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so, um-
Do you even replace the pipe? Is that what you planned on?
Uh, I don't, I honestly don't remember if they're, I think their cross pipe was, uh, was reinforced concrete pipe. I think it was in good shape, you know, had good line, lining grade. It's really, we're doing an under drain on the opposite side of the road to try to capture that groundwater before it, you know, kind of, hydro, hydrostatic pressure of the groundwater and the uphill slope kind of pushes it up into the road and it freezes. So, we're up there all winter. So, we wanna try to capture that down low and then run it off into, um, into that head wall or catch basin, whichever. I think it goes all the way to the head wall by Pratt's and then it crosses. And to, whatever improvements we can to any of the drains in the area will all be part of that.
Jim, the, on the other side of the lake, the east side, where you're gonna use, or the town's gonna use some, a blight money to repair private driveway and then recoup it down the road?
Southeast.
Is that gonna happen before the winter?
Yep. We were, we're, we were just working on that actually today. Um, we've got, we know what we wanna do. We recently did a drainage bid that we put out. Uh, it's like an a la carte bid for all different types of drainage projects. And so, what we do is say, okay, this has two basins and, you know, forty feet of pipe of this size. And everybody has a, a price for it, so we just figure out who it is. Um, I don't remember who won that one.
But that's gonna be done privately?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just be, we can't keep up with it.
No, I just, I, I didn't know, I thought-
We were gonna do it on our own.
Yeah, that's what I thought initially.
But we just, we just can't keep, we keep not getting to it, so we're gonna, we're gonna sub that out. Um, and then same thing, you know, I still wanna do the drain right at the very south side that we were talking about. Um, it would be just a little further south from that problem driveway, uh, but Phil's pushing to sub that one out too. So, we're, we're looking at both ways, but the plan is to get-
Okay, but before the winter?
Yeah.
Of course, that's critical.
Yeah, we still have not figured out how we're gonna handle, I mean, I know what I'm gonna do, I just don't know if it's gonna work. Uh, that ice nightmare at the very, very bottom of the south end.
At Duttons, you mean?
Yeah, just a little bit past it, yeah.
The river goes under the house.
Well, that's one part, part of the problem.
I have a river that goes under my house.
Hang on, guys.
That's one part of the problem. Last year, we had a, a new part of the problem where there's an old buried well kind of off underneath some rubble that, for whatever reason, first time that we've ever seen. Water was bubbling up out of that and heading down to the river.
And there's a pipe that shows. I thought I saw a pipe there, no? Maybe not.
I think so, but, so, we gotta, where can we send that water? Like, there's, there's no, there's no good place to send. So, we don't know exactly what we're gonna do. Worst case scenario, we'll have to put a, you know, an asphalt berm to keep it going towards that stream that comes under the house and not get out into the road. I don't know how successful that's gonna be. Um, there's, there, we don't know what's going on. I don't know, I don't, it, 'cause we never had the problem before and now all of a sudden that came up. We addressed some of the ice issues, you know, that were happening from under the house. And again, that's another one. What do you do? 'Cause it freezes up by the house. And then the stream itself freezes, the water keeps coming down and goes around the frozen section out into the road. And, you know, again, it's on private property, it's, you know, what do you do? Uh, so, that's, that's a, that's a challenge.
You wanted to put a culvert right there because that was your answer.
Yeah, put something right at the bottom there to catch everything.
We've got some underground utilities there that are complicating things, so, um, but yeah, I, I don't know what the answer's gonna be, but we're gonna attempt.
What about getting your intern on that one?
To- tomorrow's our last day.
No.
The other question I had is, uh, the project over at Holland Beach Parking Lot there?
That's pretty well settled.
Settled?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the drainage work-
I thought it was gonna be repaved and everything.
It will.
Yeah, no, I was just curious as an update on that.
Yeah, the drainage work is complete. The, we may adjust the height of one of those, uh, catch basin tops, um, depending on what the grades look like. But because of, you know, we knew there was some rocks in there that were gonna be problematic, we couldn't move any of them. So, we weren't able to drop the level to make everything work the way we wanted it, on the schedule we wanted. So, since that's gonna be higher, now I've gotta raise the road a little bit to make everything else work, you know, to get the, the water to flow into the drains, rah, rah, rah. So, it just, like every mission creep, you know, every project, you just get a mission creep. So, that went above, beyond our bid threshold, so we gotta approach it differently just because of the town policy. And it just complicated things. We're, we're working on it and it's, you know, we're gonna get that. Basically, we're gonna be redoing the parking lot and the road from about the lifeguard chair all the way out to, uh, West Lake Street.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, way more than I planned on, way more than I budgeted for, and it's way more difficult than I wanted to get into, but here we are, so.
I think as always, we appreciate what Public Works does, especially around the lake, you know, and, uh, you know, just continue the good work and, uh, let's deal with things as they come up.
Do our best.
There you go. I, uh, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. And, and haven't made a motion tonight. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? All right, guys, thank you very much.
Good to be back, everybody.
I thought you guys did a pretty good job being as thorough as you could, but still pushing to get through a huge agenda. You know, that's a, that's a tough balancing act. I thought you guys- Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, no, I think you balanced it as well as you could.
Few, few agendas are ours.
Okay. Bring your secondary up. Yeah, nice job, Steve, getting through that, everybody.